Good evening. Good evening. Calling to order the Reversity Council meeting of August 28, 2017. Will all rise and salute the flag.
Roll call of the members, Councilor Gino.
Here.
Here, Councilor Guanasso.
Here.
Here, Councilor McKenna.
Here.
Here, Councilor Morabito.
Here.
Here, Councilor Novoselfsky.
Here.
Here, Councilor Patch.
Here.
Here, Councilor Powers.
Here.
Here, Councilor Rotundo.
Present.
Here, Councilor Zambudo.
Here.
Here, and Council Vice President Keith.
Here.
Here, Coram is present. Approval of the journals of the meetings of July 24 and August 14.
Mr. President.
Council Powers.
I ask that the council stand for a moment of silence for Councilor Guanasso's grandson, who recently passed.
Mr. President.
Councilor Patch.
Suspension of rules to take up 17-306, 312, and 313, please.
Suspension rules.
Council Order 17-306, Communication from the Director of Finance as it relates to the expenditure of an insurance proceeds from the tornado in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 53 of the Massachusetts General Laws.
Mr. Anzoni.
Yes, at this time I'm requesting the city council to allow the city to use the to allow the city to use the monies that we received in the insurance reimbursements, which is a requirement under Chapter 44, Section 53, for tornado-related damage, repair to tornado-related damage. Up to this point, the city previously had gone to the Department of Revenue for an emergency request that we conduct that we use monies for this purpose, and we've been receiving bits of money from the insurance company before the final settlement in order to do the numerous repairs that needed to be done. I believe we fixed four roofs, three or four roofs. There was the, well, there's four roofs actually. It was the high school over the cafeteria, there was the fire station roof, there was the senior citizen roof, and the American Legion roof. And then there was a number of other damaged spots in the city that we needed to fix immediately, and we took those on, so they would not be doing any further damage to the buildings or to the properties for the City of Riviera. So this time, the request is that the city council approve a motion that would allow the City of Riviera to use the amount of monies of $6,900,000 for the repair of tornado damage. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you repeat the number that you would, the total that you had said?
$6,900,000.
Thank you. Any councils, Council Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know what? I'm not prepared to vote on this tonight. We have a DPW yard that does not have any modular buildings. We have someone who has been moved from their position because of an illness related to that, I believe. So if you want me to vote on money being transferred, I want modular buildings down to DPW yard today. Takes 24 to 48 hours to get that done. Internet ready. All you have to do is hook them into the ground, water and sewer. I'm sure the DPW can hook that up quite quickly. So until that happens, my vote's no.
Council Rotundo?
Can I just say this, City Council? This money can't be used for anything else but tornado-related damages. That's the only reason this money can be used.
I understand. I think Council Rotundo is just stating that he wouldn't be willing to vote unless other items were moved forward. Correct?
Mr. President, are you?
Yes.
Clearly, Mr. Anzoni, I have no problem with voting for this. I would vote for it today. It's not that big of a rush, to be quite honest with you, because if it was, it would have taken place months ago. So I believe we can wait a little bit longer for this. In the interim, if the mayor doesn't want to have us wait for this money, he can come up and put forward what I've asked for a year and a half ago, to have modular buildings down there. And if he can't do that, then my vote is no.
Thank you, Council Rotundo.
I actually have you for the council, one of the motions, if I can say, is that you have you for the council, another request for $82,000, and that's for the leasing land and putting trailers in place for the DPW. And that's further on down the agenda.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Anzoni.
But let's take that up, too.
We'll be taking that up. He's going to take all three up tonight, so. Any other councils wishing to speak? All right, roll call.
Oh, oh.
Council Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I heard you mention three or four roofs, Judge. I didn't hear anything about City Hall. Did we ever do any repairs to the roof in City Hall?
Well, we haven't done repairs to City Hall because there's a, we've had 47 meetings over this tornado project, believe it or not, and there's a committee set up. There've been open meetings and then posted. We haven't decided on exactly which plan to repair City Hall with yet, because we didn't know what the final figure would be, and now the committee is working on that at the present time. We have done, we had to do work at City Hall. There was repair of the cornerstones, there was repaired, repaired the roof, we patched it down. As you can see, there's a number of places, that's only temporary fixes. So we have to now sit down and do our, we've done our due diligence, so what now we have to do is make a decision on exactly which plan we're looking at in order to repair the City Hall, because of quite a bit of damage. I think the most damage in the tornado of any city property has been here at City Hall. And I have to really say to the workers here in City Hall, they've been very good about coming to work every day and putting up with some of the problems that we've had.
So I guess, you know, obviously the follow-up was that we intend, we intend to put what money we can into City Hall.
Right.
Do we have an idea what's left?
No, we don't have an amount that we're going to be able to use at City Hall. We have to, again, make a choice of decide, you know, which plan it's going to be and how extensive it's going to be. This is an old building, and it was shaken. This building during the tornado was actually shaken, and people that were here felt it move, so it's done some damage that we finally uncovered, and, but we have an area about, probably about $3 or $4 million left remaining from what we've done on the roofs and the other stuff and the other repairs in the city.
That probably won't be enough to repair what we need here.
Well, that would probably not be. I would say that.
There's no opportunity for supplemental or?
No, there's no opportunity.
From the tornado fund?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Powers.
Thank you, Mr. President. Judge.
Yes.
Have there any estimates been done, and if so, do the estimates include the ceilings in the room in back of us here?
Well, there have been estimates done that we provided to the insurance companies when we put our claim in. Again, there were a number of different estimates put in for that. As far as the ceiling in the auditorium, yes, that's something that has to be addressed as quickly as we can, because as you can see, it's dropping from the ceiling, and there are problems there.
It could be a potential health hazard. Am I correct?
Pardon me?
Could be a potential health hazard.
It could be a potential health hazard. I've had it checked. They've had the air quality, what they call air quality doctors and environmental doctors in to see whether or not it poses any threats to the health and welfare of the employees and the citizens that come into City Hall. As of yet, they haven't found anything at this time. It does look bad, but it doesn't, they don't feel, and they've tested it, that would be any detriment to somebody, anybody's health that would, or welfare that would come into contact with it.
I'm going to support this this evening. I'm going to vote for this, but I would hope that in the very near future, that a decision is made with regard to the City Hall itself, and we may be short money, no question about it, but we have money in free cash, and that's where free cash is for, a one-time expenditure.
That's correct.
Thank you.
That's correct, Council.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Powers. Council Patch.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Judge, I'm very, very concerned about the health of the workers of the City Hall here.
Right.
I mean, they've been putting up, I mean, there's mold and other stuff. I mean, you could send, you can have whoever you want inspect, but I mean, I remember the same conditions of the old police station, and you're going to have the DPW, the same conditions, and I believe people eventually died from those conditions. So it's been, what, three years since the tornado?
That's correct.
I mean, what's the priority?
Right. Well, it's been priority, and what happened is that we had to do our due diligence. That's why we had so many meetings in order to get along. We hired a OPM, which is the owner's project manager, and then we had to hire a designer at that point. We did that, and we're going step by step, and we have to follow the steps. There's actually an article about a town hall that hasn't been completed after five years, after, I believe, it was burnt by, suffered some damage, I don't know if it was by fire or by storm, and it just takes time, especially in the municipal arena, because of the fact there's all these laws and procedures that you have to follow. We are, again, doing our diligence, it's the committee that I head up, and everybody on that committee does want to do the work they need to do, and I agree with you, we are worried about the employees' health and the public's health when they come into this building, and that's why we have it tested by the environmental doctors. They haven't found evidence of mold that's in beyond any building that normally would have been in any building. There is some evidence of mold here, but not a, when they put it on, I guess, on a rating scale, it's just not any higher than would be in any normal office building that would be, and we keep check on that. And we will make it a priority.
I agree, but I mean, it should have been done, I mean, even with the free cash, we could always reimburse the money that you.
Well, see, the problem is, is that we could do fixed things. We had, at the same time, we brought a number of people in here from the insurance company to view the damage, so we had to be careful about what we fixed before they saw it. We had them come out a number of times. They brought in people from actually Indianapolis, and they viewed this building and all the damage that we had, and we traced them around the various properties a number of times. So what we're looking at is as far as a timetable for getting this done, we're not sure of that, but we now have to, what we've been doing, we have been planning repairs, not only just doing it for the insurance claim, but we've been planning repairs, too. So we have something that we have an idea of, there's a couple of scenarios, it's just that where we want to go, and I agree with you, there's a number of ways to go with this, and we are concerned, as you are, about the health and welfare of the, both the citizens and the workers and employees in this building. And I, and again, I would thank them, especially the employees in this building, for being very good about showing up for work and putting up with a lot of, not a number-one building, let's put it that way.
Thank you. Council Guanasso.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Certainly, probably most people know that this is pretty personal of me. My son works downstairs in the basement, and I don't know if anybody knows, or if they do know, he contacted Legionella disease, which is a form of legionnaires' disease. We can't prove point positive that in fact it does, it occurred in that location, but, and the doctor, a highly regarded doctor at Mass General says, "I can't go in and get tests or test the building itself," it said, but certainly it leads to that. It comes from the air, and it's an emission of water vapors in the air, and there's also another individual in that office that's there quite frequently, and he has some unknown disease that he, he's lost a drastic amount of weight, and still can't pinpoint what he has. These types of emissions in the air and the quality of air that you breathe can lead to any disease possible and imaginable in society, so. And we see proof positive out here about the contamination on the walls, and we know for sure there's mold out there. I, more often than not, we clean my colleague's chair from the debris that's falling from ceiling. These are all contaminants, because, you know, these ceilings have been up there for hundreds, 100 years probably, and coming down is flakes of who knows what's up there. It could be asbestos and dust in the air. It's the quality of life, and everybody within this building is in jeopardy somehow. And do we need to wait until a tragedy occurs? I know my son's been out of work for four months, and I'm talking about my visits to Mass General have been three, four times a week, and coupled with some other illnesses that he has. They were treating him for diabetes and other illnesses that he has, but they almost killed him trying to kill, get rid of the Legionella that they had. So this is, this is concerning, and I spoke with the mayor, and he's willing to do anything possible to make this a safe environment for the employees, as is Judge Anzoni, who's been right to the forefront one, and he knows the pains that we've been going through personally. This is nothing to fool around with. This is serious business, and people's health is a premium. That's the only thing you really have going for yourself. And so I think we have to weigh heavily on how we repair this building and how quickly we get at it. Wherever we get the funding from, that's, doesn't even count anymore. When you're talking about human health and people's welfare, this is a serious situation. So we should offer any bit of assistance we can give to Mr. Anzoni and to rectify these problems. You know, money's one thing, the taxpayer understands that, but if their family and friends or any, their neighbors worked in this environment, they would want nothing but a safe environment for them, and that's the least that we can offer out. And to talk about $6.9 million, I think we're talking big numbers to get this building corrected. I don't think $6.9 million is even a start. You're talking about an old structure. This is, and we want to keep this structure, because this is part of our history, but certainly it's incumbent upon us to make it a healthy environment for our employees and for everybody that comes to these meetings, and for us, you know. It's important, and we want to show our community that we're sticking up for our employees. We're going in the right direction with the DPW now, and God knows, that should be done. So there's so many things that need to be done, but this building is precious to all of us, and we want to preserve it, and we want to make it healthy. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Council Guanasso. Council Gino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I couldn't agree more with my colleagues on my left. You know, the City Hall is definitely in terrible, terrible shape, definitely not even comparable to the DPW, and I'm not even going to go there, because we all know that it's deplorable, the conditions that those people work under right now. It's absolutely ridiculous, but hopefully we're working to get somewhere with that. But in terms of City Hall, you know, if it rains, there are buckets all over the place to hold the water that's falling through the ceilings. Every time I sit in my chair, the ceiling falls on my head. Sometimes it falls in the middle of meetings, which you might see it on TV. It's very interesting. And we have no idea. There could be asbestos, it could be lead paint. We don't know what the contaminants are in this building. It's over 100 years old, and, you know, and the council, we're only sitting in these seats a couple hours a month. We're moving about the building more than that, but we're only breathing this air and in this room a quarter of what the people that work here 40, 50 hours a week are, and that's concerning, and it's definitely an issue of public health, and I think that although the DPW is definitely a bigger concern of mine, this is a close second, so I hope that we can figure out a way to get them addressed, because it's our residents, number one, and the employees of our city that we're putting at risk, and it's not fair to them and their families. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Obviously, you can see that we're looking forward to more planning and hopeful implementation of the tornado fund to help resolve pending issues, whether it's in this building or other buildings, and there's other separate issues in regards to the DPW. But as far as tonight, we're, I mean, I'd be happy to help use this fund, these funds, but we do want to see more of the funds going towards items that need to be fixed quick, more quickly, and we hope that would happen, so. After that, we'll go to roll call. Yeah. Council Rotundo.
I'd like to take up 17-313 with this. I don't see any reason why not.
There'll be separate votes. We'll take it, we're going to take that one. Two more. He's going all in order.
Great.
Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve expenditures for repairs in the amount of $6.9 million for damage to city property caused by the tornado of July 27, 2014? Councilor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the expenditures have been approved?
Thank you.
Council Order 17-312, Communication from the Director of Finance relative to an additional FY18 appropriation in the amount of $25,842 to the library salary account.
Mr. Anzoni.
Yes. The Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners has notified the City of Riviera that in order to have, receive a grant of $60,000, the municipal appropriation requirement needs to be at the figure of $587,858. With that, the city has already appropriated $562,017 to the library, and there's a requirement that $25,842 be further appropriated to the library in order to receive the $60,000 grant. I have an email here from Liz Babbitt of the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners and telling us that fact, and we'd like, what we'd like to have in tonight is that we have the amount of $25,842 put into the salary account. We have identified a need for a further librarian at that salary rate, which is not full-time, but really a part-time position, and I don't think it's a 39-hour position, and looking to go into the salary account. So that's the reason for this request.
Thank you. Any council motion to approve? Any council wishing to speak? Council Gino?
I just have a quick question. Why wasn't this position in the budget, since it's so recent?
Well, what happened is, is that we received the communication that I have here from Liz Babbitt of the Board of Commissioners. We received this on Thursday, August 24, 2017.
For the budget?
So, which is after the budget, and that's how we became, that's why we're asking for this request.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion, motion to vote. Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve a supplemental appropriation to the FY18 budget to the library salary account in the amount of $25,842? Councilor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the supplemental appropriation has been approved?
Thank you.
Council Order 17-313, Communication from the Director of Finance relative to an additional FY18 appropriation to the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund in the amount of $82,000.
Mr. Anzoni.
Yes. The reason for this request is because we are, we have, the administration has located a area next to the city yard where they will be placing trailers. They, this covers two things. This covers the rental of the land, the indoor rental of the land, or the lease cost, and it also covers the rental of the trailers. There's an amount also in here that would go into the, any hookups, utility hookups that need be done. We all know the condition of the building of the DPW, and this is the first step of getting the, getting it moved so that we can, so that the administration can look at the building and actually have a plan put together so that the future replacement of the DPW facility. So we're asking for $41,000 to be put into the DPW temporary relocation account and $41,000 for the Water and Sewer Enterprise account.
Council Rotundo. Well, I'm absolutely for this, and I don't mean this towards you, Judge, at all, but this shouldn't have taken this long. It shouldn't have cost somebody their, their health. I said this a year and a half ago, that we would have someone that would have a health problem. Sure enough, we do. This is incredulous. I put this on the mayor's head. Thank you. Council Patch.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I just got a question. What's the location? Where is the location?
The location is right be, I guess you'd say, behind or beside the city yard. It's right behind the city yard. It's near the, the location would be where the Health Club is, some land they have in the parking lot near the Health Club.
Is it privately owned, or?
It's a privately owned Health Club, yes, land. But it's, we're going to be leasing the land from them and also placing the trails on that land.
Thank you. It's well overdue. Thanks.
Yes, Council.
Council Zambudo?
Roll call.
Any other councils wishing to speak? Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve supplemental appropriations to the FY18 budget as follows? DPW temporary relocation account in the amount of $41,000, and Water and Sewer Enterprise temporary relocation account in the amount of $41,000. Councilor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the supplemental appropriations have been approved?
Thank you very much. I tell you again, for taking me out of order. Thank you.
Mr. President, while we're on the suspension, can we take up 17-309, please?
Suspension rules, 17-309.
Council Order 17-309, Communication from the Chief of Police relative to the FY17 JAG grant.
Mr. President, every year we, James Gatto, Chief Police, every year we apply for the Burns Grant, and one of the requirements is the council has to vote on the grant. It's pretty similar to last year. Couple of small changes added in money to run the Citizens Police Academy. Still going to keep the part-time coordinator position that works for Jerry Salvati with the businesses, and we might try to start HubCor, and that person might be part of that, too, but that's in the developmental stages. And some educational material that Officer Salvati gives out, and a portable breathalyzer. So I'm just here if anybody had any questions.
Council Novoselfsky.
Thank you. Chief, I know we do this every year, but just as FYI, on the communication we have, it says FY17. Should that be 18?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Might have been a copy and paste.
No problem. I don't, I don't want any loopholes.
Sorry about that.
I don't want any loopholes to throw this out the door, so.
Council Morabito.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief Gatto, I just have one quick question. Since we mentioned fiscal year 2017, what was the grant that we received in 2017?
It was, it's the same amount. We paid for the coordinator, educational materials. We made a couple of minor adjustments. We cut down on the amount of signs.
Do you have the dollar amount?
Same amount, $26,387, I believe. I don't have that with me, Council.
And we anticipate the same amount?
That's the amount we get, but we have to notify the council how we're spending it.
So it's always a flat rate, regardless?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other councils? Council Patch.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Chief, is this money also applied to the substation of Broadway, keeping it open?
No, that's, that's budgeted, the rent for the substation.
Okay, so this says, I know they.
Just pays for the coordinator.
For the work, he works out of there, right?
Presently, that's off Dennis Michella.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other councils wishing to speak? Roll, roll call.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Shall the City Council approve the FY18 JAG grant? Councilor Gino?
Yes.
Yes, Council Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Council McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Council Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Council Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Council Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Council Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Council Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Council Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the JAG grant has been approved.
Back to regular business, please. Back to regular business, please.
Public hearings, Council Order 17-284, communication from the mayor relative to an ordinance further amending the zoning ordinances of the City of Revere relative to the Industrial Park District.
Is there anyone here to speak on that? At this point, we have any proponents wishing to speak on this, on this matter? Any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, Emilio Favorito, attorney, 7 Dawes Street, Boston. I'm here representing the joint venture partnership of Atlantic Management and VMD LLC, who are the new owners of 135 American Legion Highway, and they are the individuals, they are the owners of one of the parcels that are impacted by this proposed zoning change. I characterize the change as one which would provide greater predictability and make it easier for the new owners to attract the type of upscale uses that the administration and this council have indicated they would like to see brought into the city. I will briefly step aside so that Mr. Joe Zink, who is the principal of Atlantic Management, will say a few additional words in support. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Mr. Zink?
State your name and address. Thank you, Mr. President. Joe Zink, Atlantic Management. Thank you again for having the opportunity to come and speak in front of you tonight. I think, as councilors saying, I think what we're trying to do is almost update the zoning. And what that does a lot of times, we're sitting down with tenants, and a lot of these tenants who are world-class companies, they want clarity. They want, they don't want the gray that's in the zoning. So, I think one of the things, we had some great working sessions with the city to bring more clarity and more update the zoning, whether it's robotics, biotech, biotech manufacturing. And one of the things I mentioned last time, and I mean, Council Powers, we've met a few times and made it very clear early on with no residential, and we agree with that. We don't think that's the right location for that, and we don't think it's appropriate for there. And so, we were heard loud and clear, and we think that there's tremendous opportunities to increase the tax base and also bring in quality jobs in this site. We've done it before in many of the locations in Eastern Mass. We feel confident we can do it again. So, taking the time to work with the city to create the zoning and get everyone's input on it, I think this makes it, makes it better for the city and allows us to attract these tenants. I appreciate everyone's time.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Frank Strinji, City Planner. Obviously, we view these amendments as very progressive for the city and necessary to set the table for the life science industry to come into the city, not only at the NECO site, but other areas in the city, not just the Industrial Park District, but in the TED District, Highway Business District, PDD-1, PDD-2 districts. So, it's, it's pretty comprehensive in terms of all these high-technology definitions that we're adding to the ordinance, and as Mr. Zink stated, they're very specific, specific in research and development by saying that advances laser technology, robotics, biotechnology, all the necessary life science industries that are out there will be looking at these amendments, and again, will set the table for them to come into the city. And I appreciate the City Council passing this ordinance. It's very important to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents wishing to speak? Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing no others, we're going to close that side of the hearing. Now, any opponents? Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're going to close that side of the... We have any city councils wishing to speak? Council Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, this is in the Ward 5 area of the City of Revere, as is Wonderland Park. I did have a meeting with Mr. Zink probably four or five weeks ago, and it was a breakfast meeting, and I was informed that they were looking for zoning changes, and I, I remember saying, "Before I drink your coffee or eat your toast, I want you to understand my position. I'm against any more residential development." And I was so pleased to hear Mr. Zink say, "We are too. We're looking to bring in quality jobs, quality development to your city." As many of us know, the property at NECO is probably much too large for its present operation, and they may very well be in the future using approximately, from what I'm told, 200,000 square feet of that property. The property comprises 830,000 square feet, and that will enable NECO to continue in their operation, and will also enable Mr. Zink to bring some quality development into the city that we have so sorely needed for such a long time. The NECO property just about backs up to the Wonderland property, and I see out there in the future that commuter line putting a stop right there between both properties. I see a business transportation complex for the offshore right there. I see quality jobs coming into this city. I see the, those jobs paying good salaries, and those salaries being able to be spent in the other businesses in our city. So, I am very grateful tonight. I ask my colleagues down the road to support this project. It's a step in the right direction, 100% positive for the City of Revere, and I am very proud and happy that I, this was in my ward and I had input into this project, and I know it's going to be a tremendous resource of revenue and jobs and other things for the City of Revere. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Powers. Council Zambudo, and also everyone keeping in mind, we are going to be putting this into zoning subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm excited about this proposal. I'm excited about this property. I've been saying for years that NECO is our largest taxpayer in the city, and I was always proud of that. I was telling Mr. Zink tonight, he's now the largest taxpayer in the city, so he took the title over, and we're looking for it to be perhaps tripled or quadrupled in, in the amount of revenue brought in if what they plan to do comes to fruition. So, I couldn't be happier, and I'm certainly going to support this because it puts us in the direction of the, well, it puts us in the 21st century, but I think beyond. So, I certainly support this amendment.
Thank you, Council. Council Genino?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I think this is a great zoning addition, and it's exactly what the city needs to move us forward in terms of our commercial development, because we're not going to attract the businesses that we need in the city to create jobs and to create this 21st-century economy if we don't have zoning that welcomes it. So, I look forward to working on this in my subcommittee, and the meeting will be determined a little bit later tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Council Morbido?
Thank you. It's a prime piece of land that has been underutilized to, and hasn't been used to its full potential, and I think this is a catalyst for the future of Revere. It's a catalyst that's going to bring jobs to our city, that's going to bring professionals to our city who spend money in our city and spend money to, in our local businesses. So, I think it's about time that we focus on economic development and change course from residential and really make sure that we go forward and do whatever we can to be proponents of this and show our support. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing, seeing the projects that you've done outside of the city, we're excited to see what types of projects you can do in Revere and the tenants that you'll bring with those projects, and we talk about increasing tax revenue without increasing the burden on the city services, and I think this is a perfect example of that. So, we're going to roll, we're going to put this into zoning subcommittee with everyone's approval, and we'll, we'll speak more on it then.
Public hearing, 17-297, hearing called is ordered on the petition of National Grid to install pole and wire locations on Revere Street.
Any proponents?
Good evening, council. My name is Mike Cordemo, National Grid Electric, 170 Medford Street, Malden. The company's proposing a second feeder down Revere Street, all the way to the Beach area, to reinforce the power supply down there. So, in order to do that, there's a higher standard. There're going to be two primary feeders per pole, and they need a higher standard of construction, and that's what these petitions are for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents on the matter? Any other proponents?
Hi, my name is Pellegrino Beatriz. I own Fury's Market at the corner of Revere Street and Tunnel Street. What happened is about 10 years ago, the transformer let go, and they couldn't replace it because the pole was too old. And ever since then, I've been having a three-phase electrical problem, and they can't put them back up because they said the pole won't hold it. So, now, six months ago, it happened again, and I lost a lot of product, but they won't fix it until they get a new pole, and I'm not sure if this is the same issue. Yeah. From Fury's Market? Right. Yeah, that, I think it's Tunnel Street is the side street. Or the side street. Yeah, they're working on that as we speak here. And they said I had to come up to speak whatever because I need that power in order to get my business back to, in order.
Thank you. Council Rotundo?
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, Fury's Market in the past has been affected by construction and other issues down on Revere Street. He's had more of his share of problems down there, and this needs to be rectified. I mean, really quick, I mean, over the past five to 10 years, I think he's been through three or four different instances in which he's had impotence into his business because of resurfacing of the road, the gas, as well as now electric. I mean, when is this guy going to stop suffering? So, what can be done to get this gentleman's electricity back as soon as possible?
Mr. Vice President?
Mr. Guanasso?
Mr. Vice President, I met with the owner, Mr. Beatriz, a week ago, and explained the situation as it's occurring. We were informed of this meeting tonight. If something isn't done within the next week or so, then we'll look forward to taking greater and further actions, but I think we do have the cooperation now. National Grid is now working with us to try to get something done. I appreciate the pain that the business owner's been going through, explaining in great detail that he only has half of his business working, the other half is out. That's no way to run a business, and he can't keep, he can't run a business and afford to feed his family. But more importantly, his customers' base will be diminished based on the fact that when they go there and they can't get the products that they've been known to have, then they go elsewhere, and then they find a new shopping area. So, he's been experiencing this for a while now, and I think we need to get the full cooperation, and if we don't get that, I look forward to working with Mr. Beatriz to make sure that we do get it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Guanasso. Council Zambudo?
Thank you, Mr. President. I sympathize, and I knew nothing about this. I wish I had, because I would have been pushing, but what I want to make clear here tonight is that in approving these poles on Revere Street, that his pole, whatever pole is for his transformer and three-phase electric, is the priority of the whole job. If it is, I'll support this. If it isn't, I won't.
Thank you. Council Zambudo? Council Genino?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I think it's terrible that a business owner has been putting up with these conditions that's been such a loyal business in the City of Revere for so many years, especially since you deal primarily with perishables. So, the fact that you're dealing without power in perishable items that you're selling is incredibly difficult, and you know, one of the big things in the councils, not only to work with our residents, but our business owners, the people that are providing to the City of Revere, so to put a business under that hardship and to deny them that service, I think we're really a disservice to the city. So, I agree with Council Zambudo, and I hope that that is a priority of this project so we can get his business up and running and servicing that neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Council McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I am a regular customer of Fury's Market. It's the best market, meat market, in Revere, and I will not approve the polls until his, his problem is fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McKenna. Just for some clarification, this is a public hearing with proponents and opponents. This, this poll process is going to take a lot longer than the time needed to take care of the Fury Market problem. I would, I would instruct that we take this offline and we, we go after taking care of the Fury Market issue, because this public hearing is going to be a lot longer lasting than what, what he needs. So, and I get there's certainly a lot of angst towards, towards issues with National Grid or different utility companies, but if we're going to solve his problem, that has to be taken offline. This is a public hearing. It's going to, this is going to take months for that poll to even be implemented, maybe if not years. Point of order. State your point.
We can put this in committee. We can fix his problem.
I totally agree, and we intend on putting it in committee.
If he doesn't do it, then...
We have to, we have to hold a public hearing, a public hearing for this, this particular poll. So, the proponents...
Mr. Vice President, this doesn't have to go to zoning because it's not a special permit.
I have a point inquiring here.
To get it going.
One at a time, please. Council Guanasso?
We can, this is not, doesn't require a special permit, so we can vote on this this evening.
Correct. We could vote on it, or we can vote on it.
Needed for the business owner to proceed.
Correct.
And we're, the, we have the gentleman before us who's going to give us, he's already made mention of the fact that they are working on it currently. Does that mean they're physically working on the poll right now? Are they doing something with it right now? I need a point of clarity with that.
The job came to my attention about one month ago. It was tied into another job for that motel right there on the American, American Legion Highway, so we wanted to upgrade the pole, you know, the second pole in from where his was. In other words, his job is tied into the other job. I can go into the office and ask them if they can push it out. I'll try, because I understand, I know some of his customers. I work with them.
I mean, you can tell them to push it out, or we're not going to approve it. That simple.
We would appreciate that, and I would agree with you, Council Rotundo. Council Zambudo?
No, I, what, my point was, I wanted to know if this was part of this proposal, if his pole was one of those poles, but it sounds like his pole is separate from this proposal.
It is a separate issue, but it is also a commercial customer issue, so.
Okay, so, the bottom line is that we're going to strong-arm National Grid to get his poll done before we approve anything. That's the bottom line here. I hate to be a heavyweight, but, you know, we, we talked about earlier in the zoning committee about taking care of businesses that have been here a long time. This guy's been here a long time, a first-class business, and he's being tortured, and I think that, you know, sometimes we have to say, "This is a priority," so you can bring that back, you know, and I know you will, and I'll certainly make some other calls tomorrow also to, to others at National Grid to tell them how important this is, and that it's so important, and I never do this. I never hold anything up as a threat, but I'm going to hold up these polls until we get his, his taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Zambudo. Just, I just want to get to the, the rest of any other proponents for this project. If we have any opponents on the council, we'd be happy to hear from them in regards to this. Any other proponents? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to close that side. Any opponents? Any opponents to this project? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to close that side. Any councilors? Council Patch?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. I got a question for the owner of Fury's Market, please.
Council Patch, with all due respect, this regards to the poll that we're discussing.
I understand, but I want to, I want to get this issue straight now before I vote on anything, because I thought, I, you can put the mic, I thought, I am a frequent customer of Fury's Market. I wish you had spoken to me about it, the problem. But the issue here is, did National Grid tell you to come tonight for this? Did you say that?
Well, they said there was going to be a meeting about it tonight. This happened 10 years ago.
Oh, I, I thought I heard you say that they told you to come here tonight.
Someone said to show up tonight. I'm not quite sure who told me to.
Oh, okay.
But what happened is, 10 years ago, that transformer that used to be outside my store went, went bad, and they wouldn't put it back up because they needed a new pole. And just couldn't get a new pole, so they moved it...
And just couldn't get a new pole, so they moved it like probably seven, eight poles down the street, and it's a three-phase service. And what happens is, one of the transformers doesn't produce enough power. So, what happens is, three-phase compressors, I lost like two or three motors, and it doesn't happen all the time. It's just when there's a surge, and the compressors just shut down. This last time with that heat wave, I lost all my freezer. I lost all the food in the freezer.
Yeah, we should... And I'll tell you, the reason I... I'm sorry, Mr. Vice... The reason is, as my colleagues and I know, with National Grid, is we feel your pain, because we deal with them all the time, and it's very hard to get things done. So, I'm kinda glad that maybe now that you brought this forward, so that we can make sure that they take care of your problem, because this is gonna be in committee, and we can hold in committee as long as we want, until they straighten out your problem.
Well, they've been telling me they've been waiting for the approval of the pole, and this is...
Well, I'm sure that... Actually, this gentleman, he's kinda helpful. He's out of National Grid. He takes a lot of the... He takes a lot of the rap for the guys that don't do the stuff for us, but hopefully we can straighten this problem out for you. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Council Patch, and with all due respect. And we obviously have a lot of frustrations with National Grid on this council, and we have a lot of different frustrations, but I just wanted to stick to the matter in front of us. We are gonna recommend this. I am gonna recommend this goes to the Public Works Subcommittee, and it can be held up there for as long as we decide to determine what needs to be done. I would hope that the Fury Market is taken care of. We all shop, and we enjoy the market, so... But that is a separate issue. It'd be the same as if someone came with a street pole on Jarvis Street tonight, totally different than this pole that they recommended. Motion to approve. Motion to send to Public Works.
Council Order seventeen dash two ninety-eight. Hearing called on the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon to install poles, wires, and fixtures on Revere Street, one hundred and twenty feet from Hutchinson Street.
Any proponents on the matter? Any proponents?
Good evening, councilors. I'm Mike Cordima from National Grid. There's four petitions before you, so this is just the second one, and it's all tied into that same project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents on the matter? Seeing and hearing none, closing that side. Any opponents? Seeing and hearing none, closing that side. Any city councilors wishing to speak?
Mr. President.
Council Guanasso.
Mr. President, the area I represent. Now, if I get the understanding from National Grid that this is to increase the power for these particular homes, now, we don't wanna pun... Could you please come to the podiums? I have a question. Are you increasing the power to the area with these additional poles?
We're sitting in a second feeder. A primary feeder, usually there's just one on each pole at the very top. They're proposing a second feeder, so that when it gets all the way down to the beach, down to Byo Shun Ave, and if they have to tie them in at some point in time because of an outage or a problem, that's what that's there for.
It's there for the protection of the people who live in that area?
Well, everybody there, as well as the beach area.
As well as the beach area. But does that represent all the people on Revere Street?
Not that I know of.
So, it just represents the beach area?
It's down there to back up the beach, yes. That's what I was told this morning, counselor.
That doesn't make any sense to me. You're putting the power pole out on Revere Street to service the one down on the beach?
Well, the line that's on Revere Street now runs everybody, but they run on a second feeder direct down to the beach, so it can work both ways, back or forth.
I gotta be honest with you, sir. It's not making much sense to us, but so I just asked that this go in Public Works Subcommittee.
Any other councilors wishing to speak? Motion to send this to Public Works Subcommittee.
Council Order seventeen dash two ninety-nine. Hearing called is ordered on the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon to install new poles on Floyd Street, fifty feet from Bryan Street.
Any proponents?
Mike Cordima, National Grid.
Thank you. Any other proponents on this matter? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side. Any opponents on the matter? Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that in. Any city councilors wishing to speak?
Mr. Vice President.
Council Guanasso.
Now, this pole's also servicing the beach?
Counselor, it's an upgrade of the whole pole line where needed. When there's two primary feeders on a pole, everything has to be upgraded to a higher standard because of the extra construction on there. Yes, it's all tied in, same project.
Same project, additional poles. Well, I'd like to see this again, sir, go into the Public Works Subcommittee, based on the fact that if Powell and Fury's Market isn't completed within a week, then I'm asking that these all be voted down.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Council Guanasso. Any other councilors wishing to speak? Motion to send this to Public Works Subcommittee.
Council Order seventeen dash three hundred. Hearing called is ordered on the joint petition of National Grid and Verizon to install pole locations on Waite Street.
Proponents?
It's the last one. Mike Cordima, National Grid. Same thing, sir. No, it's just like different locations, at corner poles.
Mr. Vice President, it looks like Y3 is getting all the poles and it's servicing the beach. Do it the other way. Put the poles down there and put the wires going this way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents on the matter? Any other proponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any opponents of the matter? Any opponents? Hearing and seeing none, we're gonna close that side of the hearing. Any other councilors wishing to speak? We're gonna refer this to Public Works Subcommittee.
Next item on the agenda is the zoning Subcommittee report.
Counselor Janino, would you like to read your report?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Vice President. So, the zoning Subcommittee met at five o'clock this evening and discussed several matters. The first matter discussed by the zoning Subcommittee was communication from, sorry, seventeen dash two two-two, communication from the mayor relative to an ordinance providing for a six-month hiatus relative to the granting of special permits for standing signs. This was voted out of Subcommittee unanimously. Are there any councilors that have any comments on this?
Any councilors wishing to speak?
I'll ask for roll call.
Pardon me?
Roll call.
Roll call, please. Sorry. Ordered on a second reading. Ordered on a third. Roll call on engrossment in ordainment.
Shall the city council approve an ordinance providing for a six-month moratorium relative to the granting of special permits for standing signs? Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the billboard moratorium has been approved.
The next item we discussed this evening was item seventeen dash two six nine. Hearing called is ordered on the application of PF Wonderland LLC Alder Partners, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to convert twenty thousand gross square feet of retail space into a health club at one fifty-one VFW Parkway, Revere. This was also voted out unanimously of Subcommittee.
Roll call.
Shall the city council grant the relief requested by the petitioner to convert general retail space use to a health club use at one fifty-one VFW Parkway, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review.
The next item we discussed was item seventeen dash two seventy. Hearing called is ordered on the application of John F. Nisi, seeking permission from the Revere City Council to construct a second-story addition to an existing non-conforming structure for office and dental lab in association with an existing dental office at one oh six Broadway, Revere. This was also voted out unanimously this evening.
Thank you, Counsel Janino.
Mr. President, before we vote on this, can I change my vote on the first vote? I was recused from that first vote. I thought it was the second vote we were voting on.
Madam Clerk, Counsel Zambudo is asking to be recused from the prior vote.
Thank you.
Okay. On the matter seventeen dash two zero, a roll call?
Shall the city council grant the relief requested by the petitioner to construct a second-story addition for an office and dental lab at one oh six Broadway, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review? Counselor Gino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review.
The next three items on the agenda we discussed together, although they'll be taken up as three separate votes, they were calendar items seventeen dash two seventy-one through seventy-three, and the summary of this is, they are applications to install three-foot antennas on existing utility poles at three separate locations, Walden Street and Shirley Ave, Crescent Ave and Bennington Street, and Marshall Street, and Pemberton Street. We discussed this as a group. There were several questions and some concerns that came up. The gentleman proposing it had some answers for Counselor Patch from our last meeting, although we could not discuss the monetary value, seeing as it is a special permit. We did definitely learn a little bit more about this, and hopefully can look at the possibility of a host community agreement going forward for future projects like this. However, at this time, most of the city council's questions regarding this were answered during the Subcommittee. I ask that these three be taken up separately, as they are separate votes, conditions to the findings of site plan review, as well as the fifth addition by Counselor Keith, added today verbally in the meeting. These were all also voted unanimously.
Thank you, Counsel Janino. We are gonna take these up on three separate votes. Any other councilors wishing to speak on these matters? And we did add in the one further amendment, our needs from this, so we're gonna take a roll call on each one individually.
On the first Council Order seventeen dash two seventy-three, shall the city council grant the relief requested by the petitioner to install a three-foot antenna on an existing utility pole at the corner of Walden Street and Shirley Avenue, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review in the zoning Subcommittee? Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky is... Counselor Novoselfsky voting yes. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo is absent. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. On Council Order seventeen dash two seventy-two, shall the city council grant the relief requested by the petitioner to install a three-foot antenna on an existing utility pole at the corner of Crescent Ave and Bennington Street, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review in the zoning Subcommittee? Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted. And Council Order seventeen dash two seventy-three, shall the city council grant the relief requested by the petitioner to install a three-foot antenna on an existing utility pole at the corner of Marshall and Pemberton Streets, subject to the findings and conditions of site plan review in the zoning Subcommittee? Counselor Janino.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Guanasso.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Morabito.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselfsky.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Patch.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rotundo.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo.
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the special permit has been granted.
There was no further business in the zoning Subcommittee this evening. The next zoning Subcommittee meeting will be held on September eleventh at 5:00 PM before the city council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Onto communications. Council Order seventeen dash three oh one. Communication from the election commissioner, seeking approval to discontinue using the old voting equipment, and seeking approval to use the new voting equipment, as per Massachusetts' General Law, Chapter fifty-four, Section thirty-four.
Counsel Rotundo.
Well, considering we, you know, voted to stop a primary election, and now we're switching to a new voting system, one, I'd like to know what is the new voting system? Number two, what is that cost? Because if the issue is cost, why we... What was the problem with the old system? I thought it worked perfectly fine. We had four different recounts and very little error. Actually, less than one percent error. So, I'd like to know what the issue is and why we're spending more money for a new voting system, and at whose request?
Through you, Mr. President. Actually, I put in this motion because I lost a recount by three votes one year, and so didn't my colleague over there. And on top of that, I feel that just as you are a nurse and working in the medical industry, you have to upkeep with technology, and I think this is the same thing when it comes to our voting standards.
So, number one, explain to me...
Counsel Rotundo.
Mr. President, are we gonna go back and forth?
Excuse me, one at a time, please. One at a time. Counsel Rotundo, and we're not gonna have it back and forth. We're gonna discuss the matter.
Well, through the chair, as the question was answered, and again, the system, in every system, there is a recount with new equipment. There has been in thirty-nine of the fifty-two states that we currently have in this great country, have had recounts with new equipment. The same thing will be said about old equipment. The Magina era, if you looked up the actual, you know, statistic, is the same across the The Magina era, if you looked up the actual, you know, statistic, is the same across the board. It doesn't change. It hasn't changed. So whether you or Mr. Zambuto, or for that matter, the mayor, has a recount, it's irrelevant. A recount is a statutory right. The Magina era is what you look at, not your personal beliefs. Statistics. We're talking about money. We're talking about people's welfare. We stopped an election because of money. We're now doing... Putting in a new voting system. For what purpose? The old one worked. I want to know for what purpose. What statistical issue do you have? And by the way, in nursing, you don't just do things that are new without having, you know, paid review information, something that you can scientifically prove. So you can't scientifically prove this. This is just a motion.
Thank you, Councilor Rotundo. Councilor Zambuto?
Mr. President, if it's not... If I'm not mistaken, the council voted to approve this.
You are correct. We voted for the funding and the approval.
Okay, so this is a moot point. We voted to approve these voting machines. They were, how many years old? Twenty years old. And I'm of belief that the new technology might be a little better twenty years from now. I know that when I bought my first computer, it had sixty-four...
Megabytes.
No, megabytes. Now I got, you know, a gazillion gigabytes. So, let's face it. It'd be one thing if we were talking about voting for this appropriation, which we already did. The Election Commissioner is asking us to approve the new machines that are here and ready for the election. I don't think there's anything to debate about whether the technology is better twenty years later or not. We have the machines. We've got to vote for them. Thank you.
Councilor Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Mr. Vice President, as was stated by Councilor Zambuto and Councilor Morabito, we did approve this in the past. The machines are twenty years old. And when you have something that's going for twenty years, they break down. They had a lot of problems with these machines. Doesn't necessarily mean it was uncounted. Doesn't necessarily mean it caused recounts. They break down constantly. I have been in my three voting precincts. Every election, there's always been a problem. It's time for new machines. They cost $111,000. We approved them. Time to move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Just for clarification, we did already approve these. The funding was already approved. I believe the equipment's already been purchased, and we're just asking to use them, and I think that's fair enough. So, any other councils wishing to speak? Roll call.
In accordance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter fifty-four, Section thirty-four, shall the City Council approve the discontinuance of the Optech Eagle IIIP voting machines and approve the use of the DS 200 precinct tabulators? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo? No? Councilor Zambuto?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the permission has been granted. Council Order seventeen dash three oh two, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of John Hurley as harbor master.
Any councils wishing to speak? Recommend we're going to go to Appointment Subcommittee on this.
Council Order seventeen dash three oh three, communication from the mayor relative to the appointment of Rapid Flow as a licensed drainlayer. Council Order seventeen dash three oh four, communication from the Election Commissioner, providing the warrant for the city preliminary on Tuesday, September 12th, 2017. This communication is being withdrawn in Act Eliminating the Preliminary Election in the City of Revere in 2017, was signed into law by Governor Baker on August 25th, 2017.
This is moot.
Council Order seventeen dash three oh five, communication from the Healthy Community Initiatives Office relative to a request for petty cash.
Ms. Reyna?
Hello, Dimple Rana, Director of Healthy Community Initiatives. I'm Dimple Rana. I'm here to request petty cash for the Healthy Community Initiatives Department. Many of you know the work that we do through Revere on the Move, and my staff, Julie DiMauro, Al Baker, and Haley Hampton. We are requesting petty cash to help us purchase supplies for events that many of you attend and also the public. So, for example, just a week and a half ago, we had the Gibson Garden ribbon cutting, and Al Baker had to purchase some supplies out of pocket. Previous to that, for our farmer's market, every Friday, we have food demos where we have the farmer's market manager, including myself, purchasing supplies, again, coming out of pocket. So we are looking to establish a petty cash fund to help us with these event supplies, mostly our food purchases and refreshments, so that we can be able to provide these at these events and not be a reimbursement to our... to us.
Thank you. And this would be a $300 revolving account with receipts to continue justifying entering back in, or...
Correct.
Okay.
And this will be administered through our administrative assistant, Jennifer Duggan, and then also signed off by me as the director.
Thank you. Council Powers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's, you know, a good idea for them to have that type of an account down there. They have it in the Recreation Department and several other departments. And there are times... Particularly with the great job you're doing down there, yourself, Al Baker, and all the other staff down there. I was at that Gibson Park event, and it was amazing what's been done down there. I know the people down there are very happy with it. The only question I have is how would that revolving account be reimbursed? You get $300, you spend $299, now you've got zero.
For fiscal year 18, that money will be reimbursed by funding that we have in the Revere on the Move accounts.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilor Zambuto?
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion is very vague. I mean, it says that... What I think it means is that they're looking to set up a petty cash account, but what I don't see is where's the funding coming from? Your funding that you... Money you take in, is that what we're trying to do here? Or are we funding this? Is the city funding it?
Fiscal 18 funds, these are not city funds. These are funds provided to Revere on the Move through our grants.
Through your grant money?
Correct.
Okay. So this is money you have in hand that you just want to create this account so to... You don't have to get reimbursed on a charge card or something, or whatever way you've been purchasing things, and then you would get reimbursed for them? This'll do it out of the petty cash fund? Is that what it...
Correct. These are for small expenses related to...
Great.
Events.
Then I can support it. Thank you.
Thank you. One more, Council Powers?
Yes, also, this would enable private contributions, as we've done before in other departments, to be put into that account. And you feel the $300 is adequate?
Counsel, that's what's before us.
For petty cash purposes, $300 is the maximum that we can receive. Donations, cash donations, are not accepted. What we... We encountered that challenge during the Lincoln School Playground build, and there was a request for cash donations, which is not allowed. And what we ended up doing was accepting gift cards to Market Basket to purchase those food supplies for volunteers for those three days.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilor. Council Novoselfsky?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Through you, Dimple, we have two requests from you folks tonight. One's for a petty cash fund, and one's for a revolving account.
Correct.
Now, is this petty cash a revolving account, or just a straight? Because I just wanted to clarify.
Sure. These are two separate items. One is for petty cash for overall program items related to Revere on the Move and Healthy Community Initiatives. That's one item. The other item is a revolving account for a farmer's market, just for the farmer's market. So expenses and revenue just for the farmer's market, for our funding that comes in, and then some fees that we also collect from vendors as well.
So their revolving account is just for the market?
Correct.
And this is for the office use?
Correct.
Okay.
There would be a couple of farmer's market purchases through the petty cash for our food demos that we have every week.
Okay. Thank you.
Council Rotundo?
Hi. Thank you, Dimple. I'm fine with the petty cash issue, which is at hand. I'd just like to know exactly... Reiterate what you just said, if you would, regarding what it's going to be used for and so forth.
The petty cash is going to be used for small purchases related to our events. So examples that I gave were the Gibson Garden, the Lincoln School Playground, our food demos at the farmer's market, and other events that we can't plan ahead for, for how many people are going to attend and how much food we can order. So most... Those are strictly just for event supplies and food items.
And what is... In particular, how does the grants versus the city funding play in part of this, in your department, exactly? So how does the numbers break down? So obviously, you've got grant funding. So like, for example, Community Development has grant funding. Part of their salary was paid in the past by the city, and the part is paid by grants. How does that work for your department?
So up until the end of fiscal year 17, all of our salaries and all of our operating expenses were covered through multiple grants. Majority of those grants were five-year grants, which ended the end of fiscal year 17, which are Determination of Needs Grants. And continuing forward to fiscal 18, the only grant that we have is our Mass in Motion Grant.
So when that runs out, you didn't answer me. You just gave me what was what, not a dollar amount. So I'm looking for dollars. So at this point, once all grant money runs out, what is the cost to the people of Revere to maintain your position and everybody else that is within your department that's going to be, you know, part of this process?
I don't have the exact numbers with me, but what I can say is...
How about the number of people?
So the number of people in my department include myself, Al Baker, Julie DiMauro, and Haley Hampton, who is seasonal until right before Thanksgiving, who is currently our market manager. And then we have Jennifer Duggan, who's our administrative assistant.
So right now, those people, what are we paying?
Council Rotundo, I understand your question. This is on a separate matter. We're talking about a $300 cash revol... Petty cash fund. As far as their salaries, that is a totally different subject. As far as what departments they work in.
Well, no, I disagree, because I want to know, as John pointed out, so for example, if you have, you know, seven people that are within there, and they're making $300,000, and we're going to give them a $300 petty cash, well, I might be a little bit concerned about that. If we have seven people in there, and they're all grant-funded, then $300 isn't a problem. You should know where you're putting your money.
And up until this point, it was a grant... They were grant-funded positions, and next year, I think that that would be...
And that's not the case at this point. That's why I'm asking. Thank you.
Any other councils wishing to speak? Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve the establishment of a petty cash fund in the amount of $300 for the Healthy Community Initiatives Office for FY 18, from account 25161-57000? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Absolutely.
Yes, Councilor Zambuto?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the petty cash account has been established. Council Order seventeen dash three oh seven, communication from Michael Kessman requesting approval of a conflict of interest form for the Parks and Recreation Department.
Any councils... I don't have much information.
To be honest with you, I only get an electronic format, so what is this exact conflict of Mr. Mayor? I'm looking... He's your employee.
Mr. President, I think he should be here to explain this himself and table this. I can't vote for something that I don't know what it's...
Understood. We can table this. This is because he wants to print T-shirts for the Recreation Department, and he would need to get a conflict...
Oh, forget that.
Exactly. He's just printing T-shirts.
That would have been easy enough. Thank you.
So any other councils wishing to speak? Roll call.
Shall the City Council approve the conflict of interest form for Michael Kessman to print T-shirts for the Parks and Recreation Department? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Novoselfsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambuto?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the conflict of interest form has been approved. Council Order seventeen dash three oh eight, that was inadvertently submitted twice. That can be withdrawn. Council Order seventeen dash three one zero, communication from the Healthy Community Initiatives Office relative to a request for a revolving account.
Ms. Reyna?
Dimple Rana, Director of Healthy Community Initiatives. This request is for a revolving account for our farmer's market, which is now in our third year under the operations of the city. This account will allow for, purely just for the farmer's market, to secure our revenues and to also include our expenses. And these would include three revenue counts and three revenue... Excuse me, three expense accounts as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, whether you believe it or not, I've been to the farmer's market several times, and it's a little bit of a critique, if anything. You would expect the farmer's market to actually have low prices for, you know, the people. We're an underserved community. And when I look at the prices at Market Basket in particular, even in the organic section, which, believe it or not, I actually buy in, I can tell you the prices are far cheaper than the farmer's market. And I get the idea of, you know, farm to shelf and all that good stuff, but you've got people that are at 250 Broadway and down the street, and actually throughout the neighborhood, that, you know, go in there and they look, and they can't afford it. And that's just, you know, me speaking to them. Do we have any accounting of what we're spending? Are we... You know, what's the cost of the farmer's market? Because at this point, I'm just wondering if we're just actually purchasing something or having them here, that's not actually benefiting the whole community, to be quite honest with you. I mean, it's a nice thing to show, and it's great to have down at the beach and down at the, you know, the Allegiant Building, but the goal here is to feed people. And if it's not cost-effective, then, you know, what's the point? People down on Shirley Avenue, again, they go to the market down on Shirley Avenue, next to Municipal Lot, before they go to the farmer's market, because it's too costly. And so I'm just wondering, you know, are we just funding a good idea, or, you know, to what... To what value is this to our community?
Ms. Reyna?
The farmer's market doesn't set the prices of vendors. Vendors have their own prices. The work that we do is to secure the vendors to come to our market. We've had a lot of challenges in recruiting vendors, and the two farm vendors that we have have stayed with us. Especially Farmer Dave has been with us even when the farmer's market was at the beach, run by the Revere Beach Partnership, and has continued to stay with us now under the operations of the city. These prices are not set by us.
No, no. Through you, Mr. President.
Council Rotundo?
Please, I don't... This is not a reflection on your good attempts. It certainly isn't, but I have to look at it, you know, when people... You know, when I see this woman down on Shirley Avenue, literally sitting on her cooler, selling papousas, all right, because she can hardly make it, she can't make it to the farmer's market. You know what I mean? She's barely making it. You know what I mean? She's going to the food pantry up over at the church. Or for a matter of fact, she's going elsewhere. The question is, I mean, yeah, the guy's coming from Lomester, I get that. He's doing a great job, and I appreciate it. But if it's costing the average person in Revere too much, and we're paying for them to come here, then I have to look at it and say, okay, if we're paying for a group to come here to charge higher prices than what's at Market Basket for an underserved community, which is Revere, I can't go forward. Basket for an underserved community, which is Revere, I can't go forward. What's that, Mr. President?
I, I don't believe we pay for them to come here. I believe that we actually charge a fee for them to come here and this is where the revolving account comes from.
Right. That's my point.
And, but, so just a couple of things. I think we all know organics and small farms and the struggles they face, they have to charge higher prices because they're not industrial farms.
I don't care about them. I care about the people of my community and I want to know how much it's going to cost. If it's a nominal fee, then so be it.
Can you just answer, does, does the farmer's market, did, did we pay the vendors to come or they pay us to come, correct?
We're paying not only the vendors, but we're also paying the employees. So, we've got to figure out what the number is.
The vendors pay to participate at our farmer's market. I can also add that we actually do very well in the state in actually providing access to farmer's market because of our matching program.
Which is?
Almost three years ago, I will explain, almost three years ago, we were ranked sixth in the state for access to low income communities, which we're actually very proud of because of our matching program that is funded very well to provide access to people who have WIC. And these are federal vouchers that they receive for the farmer's market specifically. The state also has a healthy incentive program for people who have SNAP and EBT. In addition, our farmer's market, because of CDBG funding, we are actually able to provide matching funds for our veterans and our seniors. This is something that other farmer's markets in the state do not provide. So, this is actually something that we go beyond in actually providing access to our most vulnerable populations. Seniors are, excuse me, receive a, a federal match also for the farmer's market specifically that was just distributed a couple of weeks ago and we provide an additional match to those senior vouchers. The veterans, there are no federal programs giving farmer's market vouchers to this population. So, because of our CDBG funding, we're able to provide a voucher with this match to veterans as well. So, we are making it accessible for these low income communities because it's very important that healthy food, especially fresh food, is accessible to them.
Mr. President, through you. With that knowledge, because I don't, well, with, with that knowledge, I'm hoping that we can expand it. More importantly, that's something that I was asking you for. Where is this dollars coming from? So, you're saying that we have a whole set of federal funding that's helping these people. How do we expand it and get average people more information? How can we help you get that to them? Because if that's matching, it's going to cut, it's going to cut their costs in half. So, that's something that's not out there.
Thank you, Councilor Rotundo. Councilor Novoselsky?
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Temple, what, what does it cost to run a farmer's market in, in a season?
The costs are mainly the market manager's salary, which is about sixteen weeks and it's less than five thousand dollars for that market manager. The rest are in operations of the market and then also supplies on a weekly basis such as the supplies for the cooking demos, any printing costs that are associated with that for flyers, any ads that are placed in the newspapers. Those are mostly our costs. The, the fees from the vendors help to, that come into our revenue count. We have some, uh, we've had great, uh, excuse me, funding from our partners at MGH and WIC also, where they provide, and CDBG that they provide for the CDBG funds.
So, what's the maximum amount of money you would need in a, in a year?
So, to operate a successful market, we need about twenty thousand dollars. Twenty-five thousand dollars would make it even better. If we wanted to have a year-round operation, those costs would increase. We'd also obviously need to identify an indoor location, but at the, where we are for the past three years, we've been able to operate with twenty-five thousand dollars.
Twenty-five. So, if we approve this, we put a maximum amount of money on it?
Can you repeat your question?
Maximum amount of money on the year?
For now, yes. We'd love to see that increase.
Well, Mr. Vice President, you know, I would say that right now, the city has forty-one various revolving accounts from all the departments, including the school department. And, you know, I think this is a good cause. I think it's, I, I go there, you know, at least every other week for various reasons and, you know, everybody loves going there. It's, it's a good program, you know, as, of course, it runs during the summertime, so it's only a six-month operation from the time the manager starts to, and when she leaves. So, you know, I, I'd say it's reasonable and I would, I would put a twenty-five thousand dollar max on the account.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor McKenna?
Mr. Vice President, I, as what you described, I think it's a valuable program. I think you cover a lot of unfortunate people and it sounds like you've covered all your bases, so I'm, I'm for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Shall the city council approve the establishment of a revol- of a revolving fund for the Revere Farmer's Market not exceeding twenty-five thousand dollars? Councilor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Morabito? Yes. Councilor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Patch?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Powers?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes, Councilor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the revolving fund has been established. Council Order 3 dash, I'm sorry, 17-311, communication from the mayor regarding important matters relating to the Revere Police Department.
Mr. Orego?
Good evening, Mr. President. Thank you to the members of the city council. Thank you for your time this evening. Come before you tonight to officially request that the city amend the 2001 Act Regarding the Hiring Requirements for the Revere Police Chief. It is long past time to allow for an expanded candidate pool. Tonight, I'd like to discuss why this request is such an important step forward for our city as we commit ourselves to better invest in the men and women who put on the uniform every day, who put their lives on the line for us and who work tirelessly to keep our community safe. You cannot put a price on the investment we make in the safety of our children, our businesses, and our neighborhoods. I'm working closely with the interim chief, who I will say has done a great job in his short time, to put us on a path toward making these necessary investments in our police force. This includes investing in more training for all officers, not just the chosen few. Investing in leadership, training, and professional development. Investing in a top-to-bottom organizational review and analysis of the department. And investing in community policing. Interim Chief Guido has worked closely with me to begin implementing these changes and has worked collaboratively with the experts conducting our outside review. Let me be very clear about something tonight. I do not accept, but we've always done it this way. If I did, and more importantly, the residents of the city of Revere did, I would not be standing before you tonight as mayor of this great city. Since taking office, I've taken the time to see and hear firsthand just how difficult the job is of being a police officer in Revere and to learn what support I can give and provide for the guardians of our city. I've taken ride-alongs with officers, I've met with patrolmen at roll call, I've had meetings with union leadership, and conversations with cops on the street. In these conversations, a few things become very clear to me. First, just how deeply the men and women who serve our city are proud to do their job in the face of incredible challenges. And second, the importance of providing these officers with every resource necessary to allow them to develop and grow as leaders. It is imperative that we provide these officers with the tools they need to succeed, that we invest in them, that we make sure they receive proper training and support throughout their entire careers, that they work within a well-functioning department. I am here tonight before you because of my pride in those men and women and because of my desire to invest in their continued and ongoing success and development. The goal today is to start a conversation that will lead us towards solutions. The organizational analysis currently taking place at the Revere Police Department will not be impactful if we're not willing to tackle issues honestly and directly. Requesting the amended home rule petition this evening is about how we set expectations for our best internal candidates. We do not accept that they should just be better than others within the Revere Police Their goal and ours should be that our best candidates will be able to match up with the best candidates anywhere. In the name of public safety, we should accept nothing less. The fact of the matter is, we are currently constraining ourselves to a limited pool of candidates when selecting someone for one of the most important jobs in the city of Revere. If we want the best minds and talents within the department to grow into the kinds of leaders we know that they can be, we should not constrain them. The message we send to our police and to our residents with these outdated constraints is that our city is willing to set lower expectations, reduce competition, and not listen to outside ideas. Now, there are those who will seek to play politics with this issue. Those who will try to frame this effort, effort to elevate the department as some sort of insult to the men and women who put their lives on the line to protect our community. It is anything but. Demanding high standards is not an insult. Saying that's the way we've always done things, that we cannot evolve or improve, is unacceptable and frankly, is an insult. We should always strive to attract the best, to develop the best, and ultimately deliver the best for our residents. Let's be clear about the context, about why I come before you tonight with this proposal. Four of the most respected chiefs, police chiefs in the Commonwealth evaluated our department's candidates for chief. Top grade in this assessment center was a B minus and most candidates were in the C range. It is my hope that a serious investment in leadership development within the department brings all of our internal candidates up to an A range. That is an important investment in our men and women. The assessment center report me to clear that in a department as large and as complex as ours, it was highly unusual to not have higher scores. And the process indicates we need to do a better job of training and developing future leaders. But that is not enough. We owe it to ourselves, we owe it to our city, to have an expanded pool of candidates. Just to be entirely clear about how big a limitation the current ordinance is, to the best of my knowledge, there are two cities in the greater Boston area with such a restriction regarding the choice of a police chief. Revere joins Waldham as the only two. Every other city understands the importance of casting a wide enough net and making sure the very best candidates are found to protect the safety of our residents and our businesses. But despite what is considered a best practice in most communities, we limit ourselves. I find that unacceptable. You should as well. Now that there is one more important bit of context to my request today. As you know, the easiest thing for me to do politically would be to not rock the boat and accept the status quo. Whenever major initiatives are being proposed, there's bound to be pushback. And I have no problem with facing pushback or criticism as long as it's grounded in facts and reality. That hasn't always been the case during this process. When I first stated my intention to commission an organizational analysis of the police department, former mayor came to this very podium and accused me of wasting money, of playing politics for public safety. He went so far as to say there was no need to go into every nook and cranny of the department and that doing so was somehow an insult to the men and women in the department. Now, this is a very interesting accusation, given what we discovered in the process of our own review. As it turns out, just two years ago, the prior administration actually did pay an outside consultant to perform an organizational analysis of the Revere Police Department. In 2015, a top-down review of the department was commissioned to the tune of twenty-five thousand dollars in taxpayer money. Former mayor and the former chief were provided the highlights of that report in July of 2015, just as our city's last election was ramping up. After the initial findings were delivered by the outside consultant, the former mayor and the former chief never sought a copy of the written draft of that report and they failed to call back the consultant who performed the report. This report, which again, I will emphasize, cost taxpayers twenty-five thousand dollars, never saw the light of day until today. City clerk is now delivering to you a copy of the preliminary draft report that the previous administration had put together.
Point of order. Page point?
If we're going to receive that report, I want to know why the mayor has not provided me and I had to ask by FOIA for the assessment test and the exact questions and the results of those and why I've been thwarted through FOIA and now I'm going to court for this. So, if we're going to accept this, I would like the other two.
Counsel, I'd much rather discuss this issue. We can go through...
Of course you would. Of course you would.
And go through this report and I will say...
Mr. President, let the mayor contend, you please.
Thank you. Thank you.
Through the chair, please. Mr. Mayor, if you have anything...
There's also, yep, there's also detailed information in that report about how it was paid for and the contract for services that was signed. The existence of this report came to our attention about a month ago as our own organizational review was getting underway. Given the contents of the preliminary draft report, it is shocking and appalling to me that this information was hidden from the residents of the city of Revere. I'd like to share with you some of the more glaring issues that were raised in this report. There's also a highlight, a slideshow that we put together with some of the key quotes for assistance of the viewing public. If the council would please page, turn to page two. Quote, "One of the most pressing issues to address in this area is a rule that the department must pick its chief from within. While often it is desirable to promote from within, Revere has experienced a fair amount of turbulence over the past several years and the ability to bring in an outside leader with a different set of experiences could benefit the department in the future." On page four, quote, "Certainly, a police department is a paramilitary organization. However, the intensity of this approach and its outward appearance should be evaluated as it does not appear to be well-accepted." Pages four and five.
Mr. President, quote...
Councilor Rotundo? I'd like to suspend rules because at this point, we're taking product out of the Collins Center assessment, which was done and passed by people that Mr. Ruben Cantor used to work for. So, if we're going to do this, let's do this in the open. I've got documentation here too. So, let's get, let's, let's suspend rules and, and deal with this whole issue.
Council Rotundo, I'm, I'm not sure...
Why are you afraid to suspend rules on such a very, very...
This isn't about suspending rules. If you have some comments, I'd like to have the mayor finish...
I'd like to suspend rules.
There's, there's no reason to...
Mr. President, I'd like to...
Motion to overrule the chair.
The mayor finishes comments.
Hang on a second.
Motion to overrule the chair. They were going to have an open and fair discussion about this whole thing. Through you, Mr. President. Go ahead. Through you, Mr. President.
Council Morabito?
Can we have the mayor finish his presentation and then ask questions?
That's what I intend to do. That's what I intend to do. And, and Council Rotundo, I would be more than willing to grant you, be allotted time to speak. Council Rotundo, please.
By exhibiting only parts of this and not its entirety gives a context that is not entirely appropriate.
We can read this entire context.
Why are you afraid, why are you afraid to suspend rules? Motion to suspend rules.
I want to, I want to have, I want to have the mayor finish his...
He can do that, but you can suspend rules too.
I'd like to have him finish what he has to say.
You don't want to suspend rules. Why? That's okay.
Mr. President, take a vote on suspension of rules. Take a vote on...
Mr. Rotundo, continue on, please. Uh, Mr. Mr. Orego, continue.
On, if we can go back to the report on pages four and five, quote, "The culture in Revere is very much oriented to internal promotions, although there does not appear to be a strong career development process." Pages five and six, quote, "The command staff appears to lack cohesion..." Pages five and six, quote, "The command staff appears to lack cohesion. There is a fair amount of distrust within the command staff and from patrol to command staff. Senior members of the command staff appear to ignore this issue and do little to foster an esprit de corps or use their leadership roles in a manner to help the agency." On page six, quote, "What is in place in dubbed community policing is really just community relations. While the definition of community policing has morphed and departments have created their own branding, Revere is in its infancy of developing a department-wide culture." Again, on page six, quote, "Little is in place to consistently analyze and modify as necessary its approach to deliver law enforcement and public safety services effectively. And there is a true sense of because it has always been done that way, which is often the response to suggestions of change when talking with department members." Again, this is the report that was commissioned under the previous administration. These are not my words. Pages six and seven. "There is little understanding of the importance of community engagement and little awareness of any best practices or research-based strategies that could be applied to reduce And finally, on page nine, quote, "There needs to be a paradigm shift to increase accountability, enhance partnership development, reallocate resources, and place a greater emphasis on prevention, intervention, suppression, and problem-solving rather than solely responding to calls to service." So here's my question. Why was this report not made public at the time it was commissioned? Why was the city and the city council kept in the dark? Why were the recommendations of this report essentially tossed in the trash bin? Was it because these findings were politically inconvenient during an election year? You can draw your own conclusions about that. You can also draw your own conclusions as to why my efforts to conduct an outside review of the department were blasted as some sort of insult to the men and women of the police department, a waste of taxpayer money, or playing politics for public safety. All this in spite of the fact that others, that ours, was obviously not the only administration to notice the importance of analyzing these issues within the police department. And while I will continue to work with the chief, our outside consultants, and with our whole department on most of those issues that I quoted just recently, I am here before you today suggesting that we actually accept one of the recommendations from the previous administration's report and amend the whole petition restricting our candidate pool for police chief. Now, I can anticipate at least one of your questions today. The city conducted this report two years ago. Why are we doing another one? And I have some answers to that question. First, my, my analysis will have a focus on 21st century policing as its guide, be based on my priorities for the department. While we have great respect for the consultants, who I might add were one individual who was nationally acclaimed and had done work with the city throughout 2013, 14, and 15, conducted, while they conducted the prior report, have hired two of the most highly respected chiefs in the Commonwealth, Chelsea Police Chief Brian Kies and Arlington Police Chief Fred Ryan for our current review. Unlike the prior analysis, which provides a set of recommendations, we have requested that the current review provide the city and the department with a detailed roadmap to achieve our goals. You can't just implement a whole bunch of new policies, create a process, train, you develop, you learn, and you guide. My report will clearly articulate how to implement the solutions to the challenges we need to address. The previous report had no community survey involved. Starting next week, community members will be able to provide our consultants their opinions about the department and provide input into our process. And last, probably most importantly to some of the folks who are at home, my report is being done not using taxpayer money, instead drug forfeiture money, unlike the previous report, which cost the taxpayers $25,000 with no result. Let me be clear. I cannot stand here today and guarantee that I will agree with or even like all of the recommendations of our organizational analysis, but I can certainly commit to transparency. All of you will see the results of this work, whatever it may say. Before my time, because of my time in your shoes as a city councillor and up until my time as mayor, I've always emphasized transparency. I will not let politics get in the way of public safety. We will not bury this report if it comes back with information that I don't like or forces me to confront difficult truths. As a city, we have to learn from our past mistakes, conduct thorough analysis, and implement a policing strategy that's best suited for our community. We also note how important public engagement is in this process. At the State of the City, I spoke of the importance of community engagement, critique, and feedback, and making sure that we build a shared vision for our community. I urge all residents to take the upcoming community survey, engage with me and my office about this matter, be part of this process. I know today is just the beginning of this conversation. I expect that we will have additional opportunities to discuss this within subcommittee. The men and women of our department deserve the best leadership we can provide. I'm counting on you to join with me in a substantive conversation about the matter, about this matter in the coming weeks. I am, of course, here for any initial questions. I know that there will be some, and I will be available for a deeper conversation on this matter and possible solutions after everyone's had time to read and digest what's been put before you. I want to finish with this. It is on us, the city's elected leaders, to work collaboratively, to guide us through this process and create actionable solutions. Simply looking to work with all of you for a better Revere. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're going to open this up to the, Mr. President. One moment, please. We're going to open this up to the fellow councils, and you will all be given as much time as you would like. We can be here all night. We did, we did grant the leniency to the mayor to speak for a very, a very long period of time, and he did spring upon some information on us, and I'm sure that all of us, we would like to read this. Is, can I just ask one question before we open up to the councils? Is this public record now?
Yes, it's public record.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure, if anyone would like it in the audience, they can have my copy.
Motion to suspend rules.
Motion to suspend rules.
Thank you.
Motion granted. I just wanted to let him speak.
Mr. President, for information, aren't we still under suspension from our letter? I don't think we ever went back to the regular order of business.
I think you're right. Counsel Rotundo.
Thank you. I'd like to take up 17-318, in particular regarding the mayor's comments. I would also like to point out that underneath the ethics law, the appearance of, the potential of the appearance of a conflict of interest is a conflict in itself. Currently, Chief Guido is the chief of the city of Revere, conferring with him and his boss, as well as Mr. Keyes, the chief of police in Chelsea who employs his son, is the appearance of a conflict of interest. It is that appearance that I would then ask that the city council not utilize his group there forward and ask, based upon my motion and based upon the comments made by the mayor both in public as well as on WGBH-TV as well as several other venues, that we request that the Department of Justice and the U.S. District Attorney come into the Revere Police Department and investigate these comments of misconduct and incidents regarding the SWAT raid as well as other issues, particularly within the city, as well as auditing the Revere Police Department to ensure best practices are provided, not utilizing sole commentary of particular comments made out of a draft from the Collins Center in which his aide and our employee, Mr. Ruben Cantor, had worked for. More importantly, I will point out one discrepancies regarding his comments tonight, in particular referencing page 12 of this, is that he stated that no training, yet it does state here on page 12, training records were not provided. It is unclear if this is because they are not in the database or just not provided. So as it goes forward within this, it does not state comprehensively whether these issues were resolved. More importantly, the timeframe in which this was released was during an election year. And clearly, if we want to get into the issue of transparency, I am still waiting for my information, Mr. Mayor. And in fact, there's other people that are still waiting for it and taking it to Superior Court for data that they've requested. I think it's some words of, through you, Madam Clerk, Keeper of Records, I believe, well over, what was it, 50,000 pieces of information that they're looking for, something to that effect? So don't come here and talk about transparency when you're not providing it, sir. And by the way, I'm still waiting for, A, the information that I requested regarding the Lincoln School, which you said this man in front of me said he could not provide protection for, which was a lie. Number two, more importantly, when I asked you for information regarding the assessment thing, you said that you could not provide it, but yet now you're going outside of the confines of that, and I have to take you to court in order to get this information. Yet I was questioned by Counselor Janino as to, well, why didn't you see what was in the packet? And rightfully, as she pointed out, it was only the test scores. It wasn't the questions that were asked by both, excuse me, I've got the floor, by both Chief Keyes and Chief Ryan, who are both sanctuary city chiefs. So I don't really feel comfortable using them, to be quite honest with you. And at this point, I am asking that the council vote to have the DOJ, the AG come in and investigate the comments that the mayor made and ask the state auditor come in here and audit the police department and have them move forward this, like they did up in Lawrence. And quite frankly, I think that would be a good idea. But again, and clearly if there's another comment that wishes to be made, I'm more than happy to hear, Mr. Cantor or your friend in the audience, any questions? No?
Mr. President, if I may reply.
Counsel, on his, on motion 17-318, Mr. Mayor?
So there are a couple of accusations I want to address. One, I guess I'll start off by saying we can play what about all, all night long. But the fact is, we've reported and brought to the council's attention a report that came to my view about a month ago, and we have as quickly as possible turned this around and brought it to the council's attention. In terms of any information that is being requested, we have always made sure that we respond to the requests. There, there was a request for over 50,000 emails, which, as you can imagine, and I know, Counsel, you've had conversations with our city solicitor about this, the fact that it takes an awful long time to go through 50,000 emails. So that is just the fact of having a small city solicitor's office and the fact that it takes quite, quite a while to go through that number of emails. In terms of the request for information around the Assessment Center, the council will remember, I think, that we had included what we could under state law. And it was clear in the cover letter to that information that was provided that under state law, the, the specific questions that are asked in an assessment center or in that kind of evaluation of an employee are not public record. And it's state law, so you know.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President, through you.
Counsel Rotundo.
That's why I'm going to court, because that is what you're putting forward as your exception underneath the Freedom of Information Act or the Public Records Law in which information, such as the questions and answers used within a product, cannot be disseminated. That's up to you. You can say, of course, we can allow this to go through. Has nothing to do with the law. It has to do with you, Mr. Mayor.
It says in state law. It says in state law. Counsel, it says in state law.
The state law says it for the exemption of providing the information. You have the right and the ability to pull it forward. In fact, Chief Ryan said that night that it is, and I quote, "Totally and entirely, totally and entirely public record."
What we, what we provide to the council is public record under state law.
You are dodging the point, plain and simple. You know it and I know it.
What we provide to the city council, what we provide to the city council is state law.
Madam Clerk, I believe you might know the statute because you were the one that wrote the actual, and I can pull it up on my phone. It's, I think, 43, Section 7, double I, all right? And it states, "The questions and the answers may not be provided." That's up to you. That's the exception that they use so that I cannot obtain the information. That is never used when you're asking for it, if someone wants to give you the information. It is only used to thwart someone's attempt from obtaining it. You can redact the names and you can give the information without any harm to anybody.
Which is what we did.
No, you did not, because I'm still looking for the questions that you asked. And my concern is, as I was told by certain police members, that it could possibly do with sanctuary city issues. That's why I'm looking for it.
Counsel, see, this is what I talk about, when I talk about basing our conversations in reality and in facts.
You will provide the facts.
Counsel refuses, refuses to acknowledge the fact that we have, we have talked about sanctuary city issues.
Are you telling me that both Chief Keyes and Chief Ryan do not belong to sanctuary cities?
Gentlemen, we're going to stick, we're going to go back. We're on 17-318.
No, the suspension rules, actually.
Mr. Mayor, yep, and you're on seven, you, you asked to read 17-318.
And I, and I'm asking for that to take place.
We, I, motion to vote on, roll call, please, on 17-318.
The motion reads as follows.
We're going to go back after suspension of rules. Counsel Rotundo asked to go to 17-318. And he read 17-318, correct? Ms. Milne?
Counsel Order 17-318 reads as follows, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo, that the mayor be requested to have the U.S. District Attorney and Department of Justice investigate the Revere Police Department based upon Mayor Arigo's public comments of misconduct, incident regarding a SWAT raid on immigrants in Revere, and a lack of leadership as represented in a recent WGBH-TV show.
Mr. President, as well as 17-317, as it's incorporated of requesting for a state audit of the Revere Police Department.
Do you like to include 17-317? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. 17-317 and 17-318.
Counsel Order 17-317 reads as follows, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo, that the mayor be requested to have the state auditor conduct a complete audit of the Revere Police Department.
Thank you. Roll call. Counsel Janino, would you like to speak on these two motions?
Well, I have a question first, Madam Clerk. Do I have to recuse myself from these? Because that's what I thought, okay. I was just wanting to clarify that.
Counsel, Counsel Janino is recused from this. Roll call.
Counsel Rotundo, just to confirm, you are combining these two motions? Is that what, is, they should be taken up separately as they're two different motions on the calendar, okay? We'll do, we'll just go in order, 17-317, motion presented by Counsel Rotundo, that the mayor be requested to have the state auditor conduct a complete audit of the Revere Police Department. Counsel Janino is recused. Counsel Guanasso?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Morbido?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Nowoselski?
No.
No. Counsel Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Zambudo?
He's absent.
Is absent. And Counsel Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the motion is approved.
You guys speaking to Mike?
We got a second one to go through.
Council Order 17-318, motion presented by Counselor Rotundo, that the mayor be requested to have the U.S. District Attorney and Department of Justice investigate the Revere Police Department based on Mayor Arigo's public comments of misconduct, incident regarding a SWAT raid on immigrants in Revere, and a lack of leadership as represented in a recent WGBH-TV show. Counselor Gino is recused. Counselor Guanasso?
Yes.
Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Counselor Morabito? Do you—yes. Counselor Nowoselski?
No.
No. Counselor Patch?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Rotundo?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Vice President Keith?
Yes.
Yes, the motion is ordered.
Counselor Rotundo?
Take up these motions.
We're gonna go back to regular business.
In order that reconsideration does not prevail. I also believe that several members of the council have questions regarding this particular product that the mayor presented.
We—in motion to reconsider? Back to regular business, please.
Mr. President, was that 317 or 318? I'd like to do 317 as well.
Motion to reconsider, 317.
We're still on Council Order 17-311?
At this time, we have the opportunity for other city councils to speak on this. Any councils wishing to speak? Counselor Powers?
Mr. President, I just have a question of the mayor. Mr. Mayor, you indicated that there was $25,000 spent on an assessment of the Revere Police Department back in—that was available back in 2015. Could you enlighten the city council as to where the $25,000 came from and who had access to that assessment, the results of that assessment, back, I believe, in July of 2015?
So I—Counsel Power is through—Mr. President through you to the counselor. I can't speak specifically on, you know, who had access to that report in 2015. What I can say is, the information that we were able to cull out of our accounting system is part of the packet that was presented tonight to show the accounts that they came from. I believe it came from the police department budget, and it's not—it's not clear to me who was available to do that report or who had access to it. I think any questions about the—this report, any detailed questions, should probably be asked of the previous administration.
I'm just concerned that this city council is just receiving copies of that report right now, and I'm also concerned as to where the—excuse me—$25,000 came from and also where the $100,000 plus that was paid to the former chief, Chief Riden, to lead the—to go back to being the captain. That troubles me—
I share the same concerns, Counselor.
That troubles me that $125,000 could be spent, and no reports were given to this council, no requests. That troubles me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Guanasso?
Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, due to 17-311, it's gonna require a lot of conversation. I ask that this be sent to the Public Safety Subcommittee.
Before sending it to Subcommittee, any other councils wishing to speak? Counselor Janino?
I just have a quick point. I just want to explain why I recuse myself from it. According to the Conflict of Interest law—
Gentlemen, Counselor Janino has the floor.
—vote on anything that pertains financially to an immediate family member, which is a spouse or parent. So that is why I'm recused from this, so I cannot speak on it.
Any other councils wishing to speak? Counselor Patch?
First of all, thank you, Mr. Vice President. I really don't like being blindsided like this. I mean, we had—we just had a conversation, and if you've had this—this document here, I mean, why are we just—why are you throwing it at us the night of the meeting? You just throw—you come here and you give us—you come out with a commute—communication —the mayor regarding important matters related to the Revere Police Department. Wouldn't it be—wouldn't it have been more cautious to us if you—if you kind of gave us a heads up and that you had this, let us read it, and, you know, instead of just your little quotes in this article, and we could maybe answer some of the questions that you had? And I also question that the primary draft report on your head page here has provided—was provided the city in July of 2017?
July 2015.
Well, you got—
Oh, so the report—we discovered this report through our own review that was being done, and a copy of the report was provided in July of 2017. And at the first available council meeting, I thought it would be important to present this to the council.
So, okay, so it said the $25,000 contract with the Collins Center was signed in November And that was the year of—was that the year of the election?
I believe the year of the election was 2015. If you look at the packet, there is actually a memo that outlines a timeline of key initiatives that—
Well, that's what I wish—I wish—
—that Kim Craven had had put together, and it says, you know, it goes through from January 2013, which, at what point she was working on some grants in the city, up until July 2017, when we were given the report. It kind of outlines some of the work that she has done. And I will say, this, a previous comment that was made, has alluded to the fact that Ruben Cantor, who is an employee of the city, had maybe done some work on this. That is not true. He had nothing to do with this report. Kim Craven, who is nationally recognized as a police consultant, was—the one who did this report.
Thank you.
Well, you know, I under—can I continue?
Continue, Counselor.
I just—I just would have liked to have had this to read before—and you just come here and you make these statements. And we really—you know, we can't defend it. I mean, we—I don't know what else is involved in this report, because I haven't read it. And I—I kind of remember when they did the—they—they were doing the assessment at the Collins Center, and, you know, you come here and what's this got—you know, actually, I don't even know what this has to do with what you're planning on stating tonight about change—
That's a good question, because one of—the recommendations in the report, which I stated during my comments, was that—was to actually go amend the home rule petition. So tonight's request to amend the home rule petition is me actually following through on one of the recommendations that were outlined in the previous administration's report.
So weren't you gonna make a request to go to the change of the ordinance? Was that—the—I thought that was the issue that we talked about this afternoon.
That's correct, and that's what was put before the council. In addition to this report was—the request—
Where? Where was it put before the council?
The request was put in as a late communication, I believe, to—the—
Well, we never got—we never got a late communication.
Just got it just now.
Oh, we just got it now?
Correct.
That's very late.
So, Counselor Patch—
Not as late as a report.
Well, the report, you know, and then I'd like to—I also—I also would like to know, are you saying an assessment is going on right now of the police department?
That's correct.
Now, who—who—oh, there it is. Who is running this assessment?
As I stated in my remarks, Chief Brian Kies from the Chelsea Police Department and Chief Fred Ryan from the Arlington Police Department, two of the most highly respected chiefs in the Commonwealth, are running that review.
And how much are they getting paid?
The appropriate—the amount from drug forfeiture money is, I believe, $48,000.
How much?
$48,000.
$48,000.
In drug forfeiture money.
Yeah, but that can be—that can be spent on the police department, on the audit.
Right. That's what we're—that's what the organizational review is doing.
But, okay, so the—from what I understand, when we had a talk before, the Assessment Center was gonna be to rearrange the department, to come out with a better idea for—because the guys that you put in the Assessment Center turned out not to be capable of being—a being a chief. So now, did you already—I don't know, I might have missed it, but did you already announce that you want to take a couple of chapters out of the ordinance about the length of the stay of five years as a police chief, and also to open it up to outside the city, the police chief?
Counselor—
Did you make that statement?
In my—in my remarks, I stated, the Assessment Center was done to find the best candidate for the position. Upon the Assessment Center happening, it's clear, based on the low scores, that there needed to be a deeper dive in the department. Obviously, my administration is not the only one to think that doing a deep dive into the police department is a good idea. This has been done before. So aside from the Assessment—
Well, that's your opinion. Yeah.
It's fact, Counselor. It's fact.
Well, we haven't—I haven't read this yet, so I don't know.
Okay. So the Assessment Center is separate from the organizational review, and what was your other question?
Well, the question is, I thought the whole idea, when you called for the meeting, was that you wanted to—
Right.
—change the whole process of appointing the chief.
And that is presented—that—that was—
Not bring up past record things, but—and I was—and I am—I am for that. I was for that. If you wanted to do—you want to change, but I am definitely not gonna—I'm gonna wait to talk to the two unions of the police department, and I'm also—I am strongly, as I told you months ago, that I was strongly against going outside the department, because every—every city around here has tried that and it's failed, and they always go back to the department. So why don't you just go back to civil service and just let them and let them do that?
Counselor, these are—these are all good questions and part of the dialogue—
Mr. Mayor, if I can interrupt, I apologize. And Mr. Pat—Counsel Patch, we're gonna recommend that this goes to Public Safety so we can have these—
I hope so.
—types of dialogue. This is not gonna be voted on tonight. This needs a lot of dialogue. Yes, we got a pretty significant amount of information delivered to us today as well that's all pretty news to us, and it's tough to read through this quickly.
Really? This would have been a nice—we could have had a nice—
So my recommendation—
—to take this into—
My recommendation is to take the mayor's communications and submit it into Public Safety Committee. All in favor?
Counsel—Counsel President—
Mr. President.
Just one quick clarification, that the council before it has both the request for an amendment to the home rule petition and the report that was—that was presented. So both of those items, the requests—
Wait a minute, Mr. Mayor, we just—I just got this thrown on my desk right now.
Right.
You know—
Yes, the request was—is being made to the council, and when we spoke this afternoon, Counsel Patch, I made it clear that we were going to have a continuing dialogue and conversation about this issue. I think we've laid out pretty thoroughly some of the background and the context, and I think it's important for people to have the context around that. I especially think that the chairman of Public Safety would want to have some context around this decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One more comment from Counselor Rotundo, and we're gonna send this to Public Safety.
Let me revisit what you said earlier, that the mayor had had a great period of time to speak. I would like a similar—
And I think that's why you're speaking—
And I believe that there are several people that are actually presently in this chamber that would like to speak on this issue. However, I'd like to point out that I do agree with the mayor, subjectively, not objectively, that there is a need for an overhaul and review of the police department. That is not a fact. That is a subjective opinion. Facts are based in science. That said, what I see here is some very concerning issues that need to be put forward. There's no question about it. Some of the commentary makes great sense. I actually do know Kim Craven. My brother did actually work there with her. With that said, I would also say that there's a particular leaning at the Collins Center, and that also has some concern with me. That is fact. What troubles me the most is there are 265 departments within the city, the state, excuse me, and I don't believe more than 5% of them use an outside assessment. I believe it's actually limited. However, I do believe it's a good process. More importantly, through you, Mr. President, to former chief Cafarelli, I do have a question for him, if that's possible.
Mr. Cafarelli, would you like to come up and speak?
It's—
No, Counsel, I really don't want to speak, but I'll—
Chief—
Since I don't work here anymore, I don't feel obliged to, but we'll entertain it for a little bit, which is getting pretty good.
With that said, what I would like to ask you, some germane to this particular issue, some not—
Bear in mind, Counsel, there may be some things I may not be—
I understand that you might not be able to speak to as due to litigation—
And I don't have any more reference—
I understand—I understand that. My understanding is, is that this draft, and the mayor could probably corroborate off—Ruben Cantor could probably corroborate—is that this draft came out in the middle of the election, if I'm not mistaken, and the final draft came sometime in late August. Is that correct or thereabouts?
I sent numerous emails requesting this, and they were never—they were never answered.
To the Collins Center?
Correct.
So the primary draft was—but the final draft wasn't presented to you, correct?
Correct.
So you're basically making a statement, Mr. Mayor, that doesn't have the entirety and complexity of the whole issue. And so like with the issue at the Lincoln School, the former mayor had said that he was going to go forward if he was obviously continued his position as mayor to ensure that a PAC went there. So it comes down to the execution of an issue after an election. So there's a little bit of disconnect here between what the mayor is currently saying versus what you're saying. I'm kind of troubled by that. The other question that I have to ask you, and this is off-reference to this topic, but it's particular, as we are still on the suspension of rules, is my understanding that in 2016, the mayor had sent you a letter basically stating that you could return to work, and then after that, in 2017, stating that you would not be able to return back to work. And during that timeframe, I believe after June, you and your family were basically left with no insurance. Is that correct?
I'd say that's an accurate assessment, and that's about as much as I can get into with respect to council representation.
So I'm going to tell you what I pulled from the—from the state. See, Mr. Mayor, facts are actually presented to the state, and I was able to pull them from the civil service, and I'm kind of appalled at some of the things that you did, but I would like to have a private hearing regarding that, as it's actually written to the chief's contract as it was, and he was obliged, that ability, based upon the comments that you made tonight, relevant to the issues within the department. And, you know—
Counsel, I think everyone here is very aware of what the contract states—
No, you're not.
I think we all know what it states.
So tell me the paragraph two says—
I don't have it in front of me, but I think we've all seen the contract—
Of course you don't, because no one pulled the information. You only relied on the mayor for the information. I actually pulled it.
You've shared the contract with us.
Well, we'd have to go into— Well, we'd have to go into executive session for some of it, I would say.
And that's why, and, and that's all I'm saying is...
And what I'm going to ask for, is that I have asked for this, with this body, and asked about this issue...
Do you have any other questions for Chief Cafarelli?
And now you've, you've refused it, you didn't allow it, and I'm still waiting for it. That's why I'm bringing this forward today. When are we going to deal with this issue? And, you know, the thing that troubles me is that we could potentially suffer a very, very large lawsuit because of this. Very, very, very problematic, and it's partly because of the comments that the mayor made tonight, it's partly because of the comments that the mayor's made on public TV, it's partly because of his documentation that he has with Matt Buckley regarding one particular issue in which he claims falsification of documentation, which, from what I see here from the, the hearing officer, was laughed at. So, my problems are, you're disbursching a former chief's name in public and in private, and more importantly, you're doing the same with the police department, but like with any organization, it needs to be revamped, as you said to me earlier tonight about, you know, the electronic voting. Twenty years needs to be, you know, redone. So, I, I would like to know, why wasn't his contract on it, number one? Why you avoided that question that I've asked you now for the past several months? Number two, why didn't you provide him a Cobra under the law? Can you answer that?
Counsel Rotundo. Mr. Mayor?
As, as I believe the council knows, we are under the threat of litigation, and if the council wishes, I would go into executive session...
Let's do it.
...to discuss litigation strategy.
Counsel Rotundo. Are, are, are we allowed to go into executive session right now?
The council is the maker of its rules, you can do anything you want.
I believe, I believe we have to post it so that all parties are, are able to be invited, which I'd be happy to go into executive session if we're allowed to. I'm just asking the clerk for her, her reference.
Mr. President, again, we are under, the city is under threat of litigation. So, with executive session, it would be to discuss litigation strategy, and that would be a closed session with only myself.
Madam Clerk?
It's my recommendation that any executive session be posted on an agenda, a notice ahead of time.
Point of order.
State your point, Counsel.
This is in reference to a late motion that the mayor made. We've been in on executive session in the past where we've never posted it, period. End of story. I can name several events in which that took place. One, regarding the issue down at Railroad Avenue, in particular, three times, regarding the use of Railroad Avenue as a potential depot for trash. And I believe John, you were there at that time as well, and I believe Arthur Gornasso was, and that was reused three times under John Henry.
Counsel, Counsel Rotundo.
I can go back to times...
I'm going, I'm going off, I'm going off the recommendations of the clerk.
Yeah.
I don't feel comfortable going into executive session.
I don't believe the clerk is an attorney, more importantly, neither am I.
But she, she's stating that we have, if, we have to publicize the executive session in order to have it.
I don't believe that's the case when it comes to an issue of... I don't believe that's the case when it comes up to issues of law. We have a right to do it. There is no, so in the middle of every meeting in which we have an issue that deals with a legal issue, we ask to go into executive session, we're going to have to post it? No, that doesn't work that way. You can ask Susan, who's been working for the Journal, I can guarantee you, she can tell you how many times there's been a posting at the, the city council regarding executive session. Do you remember anything, Susan?
Through me, please. We're gonna, we're gonna continue on.
I did, that's through you to the, to the reporter, who it would best to involve.
Counsel Rotundo, we're gonna end this matter. We've spoken at length, and we've gone way off topic, and I've got too much leniency, and I appreciate your comments. I will offer, if...
This is to do with the police department, there's no link to you.
Pardon me, Counsel Rotundo, if Chief Cafarelli, former Chief Cafarelli, would like to come up and speak, I have all, I have invited him before the meeting, and let him know if he'd like to come up and speak, I'd be more than happy to have him come up and speak. He can, he's a man, he can speak for himself. If you'd like to come up and speak on anything else and answer any questions that he's allowed to answer or would be willing to answer without, without his representative, I'd be happy to have him come up here and speak. He's a man, he can speak for himself. Chief Caf, former Chief Cafarelli, Chief Cafarelli, would you like to come up and speak? We'd love to hear from you.
I appreciate it, Counsel. As I said before, I'm really not inclined to, I'm not an employee of the city anymore. Would I still leave? That said, Counsel Rotundo, appreciate your support.
Would, would your wife like to speak?
I'd rather she didn't, no, it's, as they say, not my circus, not my monkey anymore. All I'm, all I'm here to do is protect my reputation, my good name. Okay? If somebody has a problem with me, I would, would much more appreciate they be professional, but to target my family is reprehensible. I bend my knee for no one. I'm too old, my arthritis won't let me, so I'll stand and fight anyone, but don't attack my family, and that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Chief. Moving on. Onto motions.
Can we go back into executive session for this? We didn't settle that issue.
Onto motions.
Very well.
Mr. President, while we're under suspension, one of the special permit recipients wants to get briefly, so let, can we please let him come up and say what he has to say briefly? Stanley D. Martinez. Come on up. Go ahead. He's waited through this whole meeting to... We did, he just wants to come up.
Suspension of rules.
We haven't even sent this, wait, this matter here, we haven't even sent to, to many yet. We haven't even discussed...
Recommendation on the, on the mayor's communication to send to Public Safety. All in favor?
Good, okay. Now, now you can, come on, go ahead. All right, good.
Sal D. Martinez, thank you very much. Show's been great tonight. We just wanted to say, we just wanna wait and thank you all for our support, the, the support you've shown us today. It's, you know, we're looking forward to getting to work again and open up another spot, and, you know, thank you from the bottom of our heart for all the, you know, kind words to our family, and we're looking forward to getting going. Have a great night, thank you.
I'm sorry you had to wait so long.
That's all right.
Thank you.
Counsel Order 17-323, communication from Pasquale Sarandulo to 19 Revere Street, requesting to purchase a parcel of land owned by the city of Revere, which abus his property. The attorney who submitted the communication cannot attend tonight and has requested that this item be held over until the meeting of September 11th.
Motion. Motion to put in committee? We've offered to have, have anyone speak, and we moved on from that matter. Correct. Unfortunately, we've, we've closed, we've closed that side. Well, if you'd like to come on up and speak, please come on up and speak. Name and address for the record.
Name's Darrell Bradley, Sr., 42A Waverly Street, Lynn, Mass. I'm a Lynn resident, please don't hold that against me. I'm gonna explain to you the relationship I have with Joe Cafarelli. 1983, I arrived in a place in the Middle East called Beirut. I'm a Marine Combat Veteran. My first tour there, April 18th, they blew up the American Embassy. It's my first, first time seeing death and smelling it. And I was, you know, just saying, a few months ago, I was in Lynn, you know, down on Lynn Beach, and tripped over body pots and everything else, seeing stuff that no young man should have to see. So, after getting back to the States, I knew I'd changed, but I couldn't understand why. Got back to the States, got back to Camp Lejeune with my unit, Second Battalion Sixth Marine, Second Marine Division, which Joe was then a part of, was put on what's called air alert, where they have units in the Marine Corps on standby in case anything happens. We had our packs, packs ready and everything else. They came knock on the door one night. This time, it's not a drill. They blew up the barracks. I'm sure you all are well aware what happened on October 23rd at 6:22 a.m., 1983. We had lost 241 of our brothers. I had stayed in that, in those barracks. They relieved us. I gave my room to a guy I went to communications school with. When Joe and I were on our way over there, we didn't know each other at the time. I was hoping to find out about two guys, one that I was, I was in boot camp with and a guy I gave my room to. They'd been found, they were found before we got there. We came around the airport, we humped in from the airport under sniper fire, to what used to be a, a huge four-story building that housed Marines, sailors, and soldiers, completely leveled. Whole bunch of Marines came around, we froze. Gunnery sergeant had to turn around and holler out Marines. I understand, but we have brothers, we have to get out of there. We went to work. We went to work, kept working, kept working, body pots. Young guys, look like they're alive, bet they're going on a stretcher. 241 of them were shot. When I got back to the States, I definitely knew something was wrong, still couldn't figure it out. I got out of the Marine Corps, March 1985. I met my wife week and a half later on a blind date, and year after year after year after year, she never egged on me about it, she just talked about different things and slowly brought it out of me. She was a tremendous help to me, and to her, I owe everything. But it's not the same as talking to somebody who walked the walk. I was coming home from work in 2005, and there's a pickup truck in front of me, it said Beirut Marine. I'd never seen anything like that the whole time. I didn't even know there's a monument in Boston. I hauled out to this guy, beat my horn, I said, hey, when when you in? He said, I was over there during the, the barracks, and I, I said, who were you with? He said, 26. Said, so wasn't I. Could tell he was a cop, 'cause he told me to pull over. So, I pull over, I tell him, I said, I live around the corner. Follow me to my house. He followed me to my house, he was off duty at the time. Joe and I talked for two hours. Everything that I had bottled up, this guy brought out of me. It was him, and he asked me, how come you never went to the Beirut Memorial, Columbus Park? I said, Joe, I never knew about it. I said, I never knew. He goes, you've never been online? I goes, no, my son, he's the one, my eight-year-old son showed me how to get online, said, Dad, you'll meet a whole bunch of your friends. He wasn't lying. Joe told me the same thing. Because of the both of them, I found my brothers that I served with, they found me. But this guy opened the door for me. Excuse me. What I had inside me, and he brought out, a human being took the time for that. Not just because I was a Marine, which was enough reason, not just because we served over there, the same dirt, no, it's because he seen that I needed somebody to talk to, and he took the time. Not just that time, the man followed up, and he followed up, and he followed up, year after year, month after month, week after week, to make sure I was okay. Then I started doing the same thing to him, because he was a police officer now. When the Boston Marathon bombs had come, Joe and I, we were supposed to talk, so I'm texting him, nothing's happening, we're always on time, Marine Corps time, Counsel Pat. I go, huh? He didn't get back to me, I'm watching the news, I said, I bet you. Sure enough, Joe's there. Now, no disrespect to anybody, but it was brought up about being nationally acclaimed. The man's a nationally acclaimed chief, SWAT team leader. I mean, other people would come to him for advice and experience, experience. I looked on YouTube and I watched one of your meetings, and somebody had said, what other chief do you know who's not only the chief, but the leader of a SWAT team? God, man, you have no idea what you have in this man here. He's a human being. He's a human being. And somebody also brought up, spirit decor, pride in a brotherhood, a politically correct brother and sisterhood. I stand corrected. This man had it. He showed it by taking me into his family, including me, not only in the brotherhood, but into his family, my family also. And it, it, it comes with a lot of things, you know, this brotherhood. To refer, refer back to a matter that you had spoke about, I'm not from Revere, I'm not getting into it, but I just wanted to commend some of the council members. Council, Councilon Janino, Janasso, please forgive me if I have your names wrong, Council of a batch. You're talking about that gentleman, the store owner, that needed more power. I seen the heart that everybody who spoke up, I, I seen that man walk out of here, not having to worry about a thing, because everybody who spoke up, their heart was in it. He's got nothing to worry about, nothing. You're talking about his perishables and, and the need to his family to provide for him. Joe's perishables are his paycheck and his health insurance for his family. Please, the man is a human being, just like that gentleman there, that you poured your heart into. When I heard what you said for him, I said, those are politicians right there. I seen your heart in it for that gentleman right there. He walked out of here a little taller. I'm not from Revere, but I'm damn well gonna walk out here a little taller for what you had said and what you stood for talking about him. Please, do the same for this man here. In your own lobby, I seen the, the things that the kids put about, you know, honoring veterans and everything. The man's a veteran. He came home, he decided still to be in the business of defending the rights, not to destroy anybody's, but to defend them. He did just that. When I ever seen that he had to check that guy for a suicide vest, I knew that he was thinking about Beirut, but he did his job. So, please, do the honorable thing for them little kids that put them, things down by the mayor's office talking about veterans, and I thank everybody who served. Do the right thing for this veteran and this former police chief, and enough, his children, his family is suffering because of it. He has a sick daughter. Please, help them. Enough already, let it go. No more litigation, everything else, let it go. Thank you very much for your time.
Sir? Sir, thank you for that very much, and I just wanna, Chief Cafarelli, I can speak for myself, and I can, I can speak for the other ten or nine members of this council. There's not one counselor on this, on this, in a seat up here that would say a bad thing about you, that would ever question your integrity or the good work you did for our city. And every one of us will extend ourselves and have, and I, I know personally I have, and you know that, I've called you personally, I've talked, I've talked to you many a times, and we will continue to try to, to extend ourselves to do what's right for you.
I know you have.
And if you, and if you can dispute that, I'd be happy to hear it, but you know that.
The council's been very supportive, each and every member of the council's been very supportive of me. I've talked to all of you during all of this, and you have, you have been support, very supportive of me and my family. But however, my, my family has been suffered as a result of this, and as I said, you take your best shot at me, I'll, there's nothing you're gonna do to me that hasn't already been done, don't do to my children.
Thank you, Chief.
And that's what, that's what we're experiencing now.
Understood, Chief. Again, if there's anything you ever need, you can reach out to any one of us. Thank you.
Onto motions, Council Order 17-314, motion presented by Counselor McKenna, that the mayor requests National Grid to repave the entirety of Pearview Avenue. A new gas line was installed for the length of this very short street, and now the patchwork on the road is sinking.
Counselor McKenna?
I'm a little behind. Yeah, this street that has about four houses on it, a new gas line was installed for the length of the shot street, and now it's dissipating and sinking. So, I would like National Grid to be responsible and pave this street. It's only got four, like I said, it only has four houses... It's only got four, like I said, it only has four houses on it. Thank you.
Roll call. Order, oh, sorry, motion to approve, on favor?
Council Order seventeen dash three-one-five, motion presented by Councilors McKenna and Patch, that the mayor requests the DPW to enforce the provisions of Section eight-point-oh-four, point-oh-three-five of the Revere Revised Ordinances relative to abandoned shopping carts. Shopping carts are littering the city, and this problem is getting worse. Businesses are not taking responsibility for their property and should be held accountable for littering.
Councilor Patch? Councilor McKenna?
Go ahead, join in.
Councilor Patch can talk, because I have four motions and so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice President. It's good to get back to business here. As you know, everybody's seen them, they're all over the place, these shopping carts. The ordinance is already written, there's a fine for them, so it might be worthwhile to get somebody in the DPW to just collect them, and then we can, we can find, we can find, you know, find the companies. So, you know, I think it's a great motion, go in. I commend you for bringing it to my attention, because I have the same problem, I'm at six, so.
Thank you, council. Councilor McKenna.
Yeah, I would just like to say that it's getting, it's getting to be a big problem in, in the city of Revere, and we have a litter ordinance, we should have a litter for carts, and I think the stores should be responsible, and I really think that we should give them a twenty-four-hour grace period. I've called them up to come to get the carts, and the carts are there a week later. So I think we should give them a twenty-four-hour notice to say, look, this is, your carts are in Winterbav, and then if they don't pick them up, fine them. Thank you.
Councilor Rotundo.
No, I say fine them. Listen, if I'm getting tickets for Park of My County in the wrong area, they're gonna, they're gonna get fined. But what's fear is fear, more importantly, there's an ordinance that they're supposed to actually have a certain device on their, on their carts that doesn't allow them to be removed, so I think we can clearly fine them, sorry.
Councilor Gino.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. A couple of years ago, I put a similar motion in, and we went at pains to try to remove the problem from the community, and certainly we sanction fines, we do everything we possibly can, the DPW will not pick up these. We have to get to the service from the particular locations where they come from, and to get that cooperation, I just felt that, and it went on deaf ears when I stated that, when a police officer sees an individual wheeling down a shopping cart, they should arrest them, that's stealing. And that would stop it, once and for all, that's how you stop this. You don't stop this by me picking them up. That's enabling, we should just stop them by arresting them and charging them a hefty fine. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Motion to approve?
Calendar item, I'm sorry, Council Order seventeen dash three-one-nine, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo, that the mayor requests inspectional services to address the issue of illegal use of residential property. Oh, I apologize, no, my, check that, my apologies. Council Order seventeen dash three-one-six, motion presented by Councilor McKenna, that the mayor requests the city planner and building inspector to draft an ordinance that would require apartment or condominium buildings in excess of two stories to have safety bars installed on the windows. The purpose of this ordinance would prevent children from falling out of windows.
Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. About five thousand kids a year fall out of windows. Nine kids in Massachusetts have fallen out of windows in the last six months, two have died. With all the development that's going up and the high stories that we're having, and it doesn't have to be every single window, but if they have children, the development, the people that own the developments should provide safety guards. They're very, very cheap, but they prevent kids from going out the window, and you can get them at Home Depot and Lowe's. So someone asked me tonight, they said, well, you know, I live on the third floor and I don't have children. Well, it doesn't have to affect the people that don't have children, just people that do have children and have these developments, provide these safety guards, so these kids don't fall out the window and die. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Motion to approve?
Council Order seventeen dash three-one-nine, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo, that the mayor requests inspectional services to address the issue of illegal use of residential property for commercial business, as well as congestion and illegal parking in the neighborhood of Rand, Howard, and Oxford Streets. Furthermore, that a community meeting be held regarding neighbors in the area running commercial businesses out of their house, having parties at all hours, and disregarding parking laws, thus disrupting the neighborhood. Furthermore, what has been the response by the police?
Councilor Rotundo.
It speaks for itself, but I know you've been, I just spoke to Cindy outside, that it's been addressed by you recently, but they're still having the problems.
Thank you, councilor, I'll speak briefly on that. We've, we've had some community meetings with the neighbors up there, we've had some, I mean, I can tell you, I've spent more time in those three streets in the last two years than any streets in the entire city. We have some very vocal residents who I totally appreciate, they keep us on our toes, and I, I hope, I hope that a lot of these issues will be resolved with the residential permit parking, and I hope that we continue to see strong enforcement in that neighborhood.
Please feel free to add yourself to the motion too.
Certainly. Would you, would you add Councilor Keith to that motion as well? Motion to approve? Sorry, pardon me.
You always forget to look to the right.
I, I, I struggle to go this way, it's a neck issue.
I just wanted to commend Councilor Rotundo on this motion, I think it's a great motion. I've as well got some complaints from residents in this neighborhood, calls and emails, and it's, it's not fair, no one should have to live like that, being concerned about parking or dealing with someone running a business across the street from you or in your neighborhood. So I think it's great that it was brought up, I commend the counselor and the ward counselor for working on this, and I hope that we can get it resolved, because it should be a very quiet neighborhood, they're off the main road, it's a beautiful place to be, and it's a shame that they're being disrupted in that way.
Councilor Rotundo.
To you, Mr. President, to Councilor Gino, frankly, I feel bad for Councilor Keith, when I was the ward four counselor, it was the same issue up there. It's an ongoing issue because of where it's positioned, you know more than anybody else, you know, Councilor Gino, it's Proctor, as well as Park Avenue, and sometimes to a lesser degree, down at Oakwood and Amasa, where people just, they have their way with the neighborhood, and it's a terrible thing, so it's one of those things that we just have to constantly be on.
And Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. One of the solutions that I could say to you guys is Beechmont had a really big problem with kids loitering, pottying down the end, a dead-end street, and we put lights there, floodlights, and we don't have that problem anymore, so. Floodlights.
Understood. Lighting is always good.
Thank you.
Motion to approve?
Council Order seventeen dash three-two-zero, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo, that the mayor provide the city council with a list of nonprofits the city of Revere provides for or has given funding. This request shall include the amount and date in which it was given, if at all.
Councilor Rotundo.
Speak for itself.
Speak for itself, anyone else? Motion to approve?
Council Order seventeen dash three-two-one, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo, that the mayor requests the city solicitor to draft a letter to any and all pharmacies within the city's limits that engage in needle exchange, that would require said pharmacy to be a twenty-four-hour needle depository without charge. This can be done with a drop box outside of the pharmacy.
Whether it be the police department, the fight department, the DPW, they're getting paid to do this, so to speak, and, you know, I understand the idea of needle exchange and giving somebody a second chance, preventing hepatitis, HIV, the cost effectiveness of it, and the humanity regarding it, but at the end of the day, as we provide these needle exchange within the city through the pharmacies, there needs to be something to do by these pharmacies to help stop the problem of people dropping their needles on the street. More importantly, it gives the police department, instead of having to run back with a needle in their car, God forbid, you know, it just allows it, it's a very simple thing for, for the pharmacy to do, is to put a drop box in there, it doesn't take much, and this would be, I think, an easy fix for them, but again, you know, Rite Aid, for that matter, Walgreens, they have twenty-four-hour service, excuse me, at Walgreens, it might be something that they might be good neighbors to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Rotundo. You know, unfortunately, in this day and age, I think things like that are needed, and it's a necessary motion, and I'm certainly in favor, and, you know, like I said, this is what we're living with right now, and we're gonna just try and do the best with that, so. Motion to approve.
Council Order seventeen dash three-two-two, motion presented by Councilors McKenna and Novoseltsky, that the mayor requests the DCR to install cameras outside all bathhouses on Revere Beach. With the recent incident that happened last Wednesday and the increase of development along the beach, safety for the public should be the city's first priority.
Councilor McKenna. Council.
I think this speaks for itself, but I just want to say that I think the nearest camera is down across the street where Revere Beach train station is, so I don't think there's any, oh, point of information? Oh, okay, so I don't think there's any, currently, I don't think there's any cameras on Revere Beach, so there should be, especially on the bathhouses, there should be cameras.
Thank you, councilor.
Thank you.
Councilor Rotundo.
I agree with you a thousand and ten percent. They should be not only down at the bathhouse, it should be throughout the entire system, down towards Kelly's itself, at the actual little, I don't know what you would call, recreational areas, in particular, down by the bandstand as well. Frankly, when we have events down there, we have people that get rowdy, it would be a great way to apprehend them, and God forbid, more importantly, we do have national events down there, it would be a great way to ensure the integrity of a national event and help with protecting the people, you know, in particular, the sandcastle, so they should be looking at this in the sense of public safety, beyond that, more, more or less on homeland security as well. Thank you.
Thank you, councilor. Councilor, motion to approve?
Late motions, Council Order seventeen dash three-two-four, motion presented by Councilor Rotundo, that the mayor be requested to have the temporary trailer for the DPW up within thirty days, additionally, that a new DPW facility start construction within one hundred and eighty days.
Councilor Rotundo.
So this is, I'm grateful that the mayor has forwarded eighty thousand dollars, whatever the amount is, in order to have the trailers there. I don't know why it took so long. We now have one person who is ill, and I would argue that this is a byproduct of their work environment, and to the point that they have moved this person, so what is it with the rest of the people that are down there, that are there day in and day out? This should never have taken this long, this was a simple fix. I literally had called several of the modular space people that are online, and this can be done, literally, within three days, to have a hundred, you know, person classrooms, which is eight trucks, as they put it, would have taken them less than a week and a half to put up. We waited a year, a year for this, and now we're gonna wait more time to get a building put up? You know, I seen them put up a twenty-story building in Boston in quicker time, in an area that actually had more problems. In fact, they put a hotel at the old Muffler Place, across the street from it in Chelsea, that has had contamination, and they're doing it in quicker time. So, what are we waiting for? And if there is contamination down there, then, you know, we can always go to the EPA and ask to get some money from them. After all, we are paying them hundreds of millions of dollars.
Thank you, Councilor Rotundo. Motion to approve?
Late motion presented by Councilor Gino, that the mayor requests the school department to facilitate the repair of all ceiling fans within the Lincoln School. Some of the fans have not been operable for, for several years and should be working in the absence of air conditioning.
Councilor Gino.
Mr. Vice President, we've been told for the past two years that the Lincoln School AC would be operable and the students would be given quality air. That hasn't happened. So in the absence of that, and maybe if we're looking for some revenue to absolutely do that, there are ceiling fans there that can certainly cool off the schoolchildren. That, for some reason or other, that flat roof there generates heat like you wouldn't believe on the top floor, and it's really a baking source. It's unfair for the teachers and the students to have to try to go through the day under those conditions. The simplest thing we can do is send in a crew to upgrade those fans, get them workable, and at least give some relief to the kids. We had some sort of a break today where the weather wasn't that hot, but we can't count on that. There'll be days that are very, very stifling up there, and we have to give these kids some relief, because they've been waiting for two years now patiently. So I ask this be submitted to the school department ASAP and get some results ASAP. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you, Councilor Gino, that's a good motion. I think we need to take care of that school, it's been a priority for a while, and it has taken a little, little too long, so. I know a lot of families that live in my ward that go to that school, and I'd like to see some relief out there myself. Motion to approve?
Late communication from the mayor requesting that a historical marker be installed to commemorate the Great Revere Trainwreck of eighteen seventy-one.
Mr. Vice President, prior to the speaker coming to the podium, I would like to introduce to you a former Revere City Councilor, Donald Zola. He, he did an excellent job in his year, years as a city counselor, and he served the community well, and even though he relocated to another state, he still has an update on the city of Revere daily. So I introduce to you again my dear friend, Donald Zola, former Revere City Councilor.
Mr. Zola, welcome to our meeting. As a person that studies history, I think you can appreciate the historic.
I've been through some of these myself, so I have, I have.
I can imagine.
I have, I have an understanding. One correction to my good friend Arthur, with whom I go all the way back to the old Parry Revere School. I've only relocated to the neighboring town of Saguas, not a, I do, I do spend the winters in Florida, but that's, but that's it. I just want to say it's been, oh, I think forty-five years since I've been in one of those seats, and it's been something like fifty-two years since I've spoken from this side. I will be brief, I realize that you folks have a long agenda. Two nights ago was the one hundred and forty-sixth anniversary of the Great Revere Trainwreck, and I think it's about time after one hundred and forty-six years that we have some sort of a memorial marker placed in commemoration of this event. The event itself probably is a negative experience when you think that twenty-nine people died in this event, and at the time, it was, it was, and probably still is, the largest trainwreck that happened in Massachusetts, and one time was also the seventh largest trainwreck in the United States. That was a long time ago. I won't take any time by going into the reasons why this happened, but it did happen. By my own research and calculations, I estimate that if you stand at the corner of Hitchbahn and Parkway, and you look north up Hitchbahn, the very first house on the left, which actually has a Parkway address, the wreck occurred right behind that house, the debris field was scattered way out. And I think that if there is a redeeming value to any of this, if you've read the accounts of this, it was, it was a horrific death for twenty-nine people. Most of these people were scalded by steam, they were burnt. The next day, when people went through the wreck, they found human forms, skin completely taken off, scalded, molded to the seats of the, what was left of this. That night, the small train station that they had served as both a morgue and a makeshift hospital, if you want to call it that. There were no paved roads then, the nearest hospitals were the Mass General, which meant that you had to take a horse and wagon, and then take the ferry in hopes that you could catch the ferry to cross the river to get there. The old, as we knew it, the Chelsea Naval Hospital back then, then was called the Marine The old, as we knew it, the Chelsea Naval Hospital back then was called the Marine Hospital. There were several attempts made to get wounded people there. In the midst of all of this, it happened at nighttime, it was on a Saturday night, and the saving grace that I found here was that the accounts that I've read talked about the people from Revere came out, and they did all that they could to help these people who were still living but were in tremendous pain, unbelievable pain, and they provided horses and wagons, they took some to Chelsea, they took them into their own homes. And to me, that's what I've always referred to, and I was born in the city, I was born in a house on Revere Street. This is what I call a Revere spirit, there's that notion of people helping people. So I brought, this is, by the way, even though my name appears on the letter from the mayor, this is really a joint venture with the RSCHP. And one other thing that I would like to let you know, that in the future, there are a couple of other events we may come before you for and ask that you, do we have some sort of a marker placed or something? Very few people know that in 1887, there was a lightweight boxing championship match fought here in Revere. Jack McCallum, who was the champion at that time, retained his title against a British champion who came to America to fight. So that occurred in Revere. We have a number of outstanding veterans leaders. I'm not talking about the rank-and-file people, I'm talking about the people who have headed organizations in this city. Several of them have gone on to head the state organizations, several of them have gone on to head national organizations. For example, Samuel Samuels, most of you may have remembered him, he served on the school committee at one time. He became the head of the Massachusetts JJV Jewish War Veterans. He also became the national head of the Jewish War Veterans. Bessie Hankin and Joe Hankin, names to go way back. Ira, if he was here, would know them from Ward 2. They were, she was national leader of the VFW Auxiliary as well as state leader. Also, Max Maso was head of the JJV State. So maybe this is another thing that we might come back for. And very few people know that a guy by the name of John Cazale came from Revere. I'm sure most of you probably don't know who John Cazale is, but if I told you, if I mentioned the name Fredo Corleone, you would know who he is. So this great actor, although he only made five films, all of them are considered great works of art. So I will be happy to entertain any questions that you may have. I do appreciate the opportunity to present this to you and hope that you will look favorably upon it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Yeah, I don't know if there are any questions from the council. I think the information you've provided is a great deal of knowledge, and it's important to bring the history forward, I mean, especially for some of the younger leaders like myself. You know, I'm sure John Powers remembers that train crash, but we...
I recall John with great affection.
Mr. Vice President, I was gonna say, I think John was in the first row.
Mr. President.
It's always good to understand our history, and we appreciate you right now for it.
Mr. President, I'd like to...
Yes, sir, John Powers.
If it's agreeable, I'd like to amend that motion to replace the sign at the Andrew Cassassa Overpass on Broadway, which was named in front of our former mayor, Andrew Cassassa.
And you know, I didn't want to extend my list, but I have him on our list, too, because very few people know, he was the first Etlo American mayor in Massachusetts, and he was the first Etlo American state senator in Massachusetts, and he also headed the national organization of, it was like carnival people, Revere Beach amusement-type people, there was a national organization, he headed that as well.
At one time, we had a great sign there.
I remember, I do remember that, I often wondered what happened with that, but that, I think is, I think that's more or less like a state thing, since it's a state highway...
Well, we can request Mass Highway to do it.
Whatever.
I just hope you don't have me on your list.
And Joe James.
I would be far that.
Well, thank you. Motion, roll call, please. Motion to approve, all in favor? Before we end tonight's meeting, pardon me, excuse me, before we end tonight's meeting, I just wanted to make an announcement. Obviously, the Revere City Council extends their hearts and prayers to the victims of Hurricane Harvey in Texas, and the city veteran services is setting up a drive to collect items up until Thursday. You can drop things off at the American Legion Veteran Service Department, non-perishable items. And then, yep, so diapers, toiletries, things like that will be collected at the veteran services up until Thursday for Hurricane Harvey relief. Next scheduled meeting will be September 11th, 2017.